Good evening. Being a little after 6 o'clock, I call to order the meeting of the Westboro Select Board called here postponed from Tuesday, March 14th to Thursday, March 16th. I would ask all those that are able to please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I can't get my door to see. Can you? Can't get the door. So the first thing, apologies for the door issue back there. First thing on our agenda is open forum. We did have one request for open forum. Mr. Caprioli, please come forward.
I'm Caprioli, Knight Crown Ridge Road. What triggers my presence here is something that happened at the town meeting when the library articles were on the agenda. And in the question and answer period, someone asked a question about the tax burden in Westboro, something like that. And Kristy, town manager, got up and she had this chart and it showed biography and it showed Westboro's average single-family tax bill somewhere in the middle of a dozen communities. And I saw that and I said, well, this is totally wrong. This doesn't represent an accurate answer to the question. It isn't even remotely accurate. And in the town manager's defense, I'd like to read something, please. Help me indulge me so I can make a presentation that is meaningful to you and to the residents of the community. This is on the data dashboard communities in the budget message. And it says, it talks about the representative net to identify comparison communities that could be used to measure financial performance indicators. It says this group was made up of the school superintendent, assistant superintendent, school committee, five members, select board representatives, Helen O'Malley, and the town manager. Select board representative doesn't suggest five of them. Communities were based on academic performance demographics and or financial attributes or that teams felt were similar to Westboro. Westboro identified the following communities. Those the communities here is totally ridiculous. And I believe that's been identified lately as the correct analysis. They don't represent Westboro as a financial burden to the residents. They're not comparable to Westboro as a financial burden to the residents. And for all strategic purposes, I would suggest that what's comparison, what you want to know, what somebody wants to know is what's the tax rate. When, again, if you'll indulge me at the time, I'll really make this clear to you. When people own property, when people have a residence, what they do is they have property wealth. They have so many dollars of property wealth. Whatever that dollar amount they choose is theirs to determine, whatever the location is there to determine. But they have a certain amount of property wealth. If they have $500,000 property wealth in this community or that community or some other community, they want to know what is the cost per dollar of property wealth that my tax burden is going to be. They want to know the cost per dollar, which translates into the tax rate. If I can give you an example, if you'll indulge me, I'll give you an example. If someone wants to, if someone has money and they have financial wealth and they want to put some money in a bank, they don't go to various banks and ask, what is your average monthly or yearly interest rate payment? That is ridiculous. It's based on the amount of money and it's based on something called the interest rate. And it's a numerical amount. It's the amount of pennies or the amount of dollars per thousand dollars. That is an apples and apples comparison. The tax rate is an apples and apples comparison. I'm asking this board and the town manager to totally delete this, any, from the town meeting, any data dashboard community reference or any average single-family 2023 tax bill. That information is totally useless and bogus because it doesn't represent an apples and apples comparison. An apples and apples comparison, in my opinion, is the tax rate. And for your edification, if you'd want one, do you want me to pass these out? I have the tax rates of the communities in the dashboard. Does anybody want some?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Good. Great. Don't take away from my time.
Thank you.
I'll pass them down for you.
Thank you, sir.
As you can see, Westboro is near the top. Just for my, just so that I got the sense that Westboro is actually a heavily taxed community or is high on the tax rate burden for communities in Massachusetts. What I did is I actually set up a map of Massachusetts and starting, I did a clockwise, that would be starting from 12, clockwise spiral around Westboro, listing the communities, clockwise spiral. Understand what I did? Clockwise spiral. I started when I ran out of papers, about 55 communities, 56 communities. Then I saw, then I tabulated the number above Westboro and the number below, and Westboro was like in the 85 percentile. As another interesting adventure, I took every single community in the state of Massachusetts, listed their tax rate, residential tax rate, from high to low, saw where Westboro was in that list. And again, it was somewhere in the 85 percentile. I venture to guess if you get a comparison communities, Westboro will be somewhere in the 85 percentile region. It could be between 80 and 90, depending if you bring in certain considerations like wealth and things like that. But basically, Westboro is not in the middle. Please don't present this information. It's inaccurate, it's misleading, and it doesn't serve the community when they're deciding on a $90 million, roughly $90 million spending orgy. I don't know. You call it what you like. Budget. Oh, budget, that's the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic.
If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Anybody else here for open forum? Great. Next on our agenda is reorganization of the Select Board. Folks know our town election was just held this past Tuesday. Personally, thank you to the residents for coming out and vote. We did have good turnout, even with the stormy weather. I do personally appreciate being reelected to another term on the Select Board. But as is the practice of this board is immediately following that, that we reorganize the board in terms of election of chair and vice chair. So at this point, I would open the floor for discussion or any motions in terms of reorganization.
We're looking that way. You want to start the conversation?
So I would move to nominate Sean Keough to be our chair.
I would second.
So the discussion or other nominations?
I would just add that in, you know, it's not set in stone as a rule, but generally historically, this board has elevated the vice chair to the chair position, knowing that the chair has mentored the vice chair and the roles and responsibilities that the chair holds over the last year. So.
For better or for worse?
For better or worse.
No, and I appreciate Sean and Sean filling in for me as necessary, as always, to lend a hand. So thank you for that motion. All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Sean.
Do you want to take over for the vice chair?
You can, let you finish it off.
Okay. Next would be a, since we are now out a vice chair, since Sean has been voted in as chair, is there a nomination for vice chair?
Yes.
I nominate Patrick Welch for vice chair.
Second?
Moving seconded.
Would you be willing to serve?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Thank you to Sean and to Patrick. Want to move into the hot seat?
Well, we can do it figuratively.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my fellow board members. I am confident in this position based on, you know, the amount of experience we have on this board. And if at times I go off the rails, he will place me back on them. So thank you very much. Our next item of business is Class II dealer's license hearing for TD&amp;J International Motors. And Kristy, if you would take it away.
Yep. This is a follow-up from your February 14th meeting where you had the licensee in to discuss the status of his license, understanding that he's not currently located in Massachusetts. He is in Florida. So we did invite him to attend this meeting. He's let us know that he is not attending the meeting. There was discussion on the 14th about the licensee going through the process of applying for a DBA, which would have led to the zoning enforcement officer making a determination related to the home business at the new address that was provided. There was a question from the applicant or the licensee about whether or not the board had had a chance to review the minutes from when the license was initially awarded, as well as reviewing the restrictions on the license. So you did get those minutes as well as the license with the four restrictions in your packet. At this point, we have not received that paperwork for a DBA, so we will be reaching back out to, or our plan is to reach back out to the licensee, asking him to attend a revocation here, a suspension or revocation hearing based on the fact that he's no longer, that he's not located in Westboro, and ask him to fill out some additional information for the zoning officer to make a determination.
So now, at this point, have we effectively pushed forward the hearing?
Well, we have to make a motion to schedule the hearing, right?
You can, sure. I mean, you could schedule the hearing now or we could, we just need to send him out a letter, a week in advance of whenever the hearing is going to be. So if you want to discuss whether or not that should happen on the 28th, you can have that discussion.
I would not. Go ahead, Ian.
No, you would use.
I would make the motion and move to schedule a hearing on March 28th, 2023 at 6:15 PM to consider suspension or revocation of the Class II dealer's license issued to TD&amp;J International Auto Sales. Second that?
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement. I mean, I think we've, we had the meeting, we asked for it. We haven't, we did what was asked of us. You provided all the information, the minutes, the license. We've all seen that, reviewed it. I think this is the next step. I don't think we should be licensing something that's not resident here in town. So fully supportive.
Any other thoughts? Folks are comfortable, ready to vote? All right. Show of hands. Five to zero, five being present. Thank you very much.
Next is a vote to approve and execute bond anticipation notes and general obligation bonds. And I believe is our new town accountant?
Treasurer.
Treasurer.
Treasurer Collector. Pardon me. Thank you.
Linda Smith, Treasurer Collector, with the current bonds and notes for signature and approval. If someone wants to read the votes.
I can, want me to do it?
Go for it. You like the long reads.
Okay. So hopefully I get this right, but I move that the sale of $10,390,000 general obligation school bonds of the town dated March 27th, 2023, the open quote, bonds, close quote, to Raymond James and Associates Incorporated at the price of $11,178,497.95 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on March 15th of the year's and the principal amounts and bear interest at their respective rates as follows. Do I have to read all those or? Basically, what I'll summarize it, years 2024 through 2034, amounts of 520,000 each year at an interest rate of 5%. Actually, that's through 2035. For year 2036, principal amount of 520,000, interest rate of 3.25%. For years 2037 through 2041, principal amount of 520,000 each year at an interest rate of 4%. And then in 2043, final payment amount of $1,030,000 at an interest rate of 4%. Further move that the bond's maturing on March 15th, 2043, a, in parentheses, term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. For the term bond due March 15th, 2043, on the date of March 15th, 2042, principal amount of 515,000. Date of March 15th, 2043, maturity, 515,000. And further move to approve the sale of $63,652,366 general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated March 28th, 2023, payable March 28th, 2024. The notes to Wells Fargo Bank, National Association at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $1,219,579.33. Further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 1st, 2023, and a final official statement dated March 8th, 2023. The official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated March 1st, 2023, and a final official statement dated March 8th, 2023, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further move that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further move that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events disclosure undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council of the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with the relevant securities laws. Further move that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds and the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a .pdf file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further move that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second?
Thank you, Ian. Well done. Any comments?
I think just maybe to note that we went through the ratings call for the public to understand the towns.
And I was just to clarify, for the $10.3 million bonds, that's for the Hastings preschool. And for the notes for the 63.6 million, 10.5 million is for the Forbes building, 915,000 is for the high school, 10.3 million is for the Armstrong school, 37.6 million is for the Fails School project, 1.7 million is for the Hastings school, 998,000 is for the cemetery construction, and there's another 471,000 for another Forbes building project, and 255,000 for the Fails feasibility study, and 45,000 for water mains, 570,000 for sewer interceptor, and 6.3 million for the wastewater treatment. And just to know that we did, the town did get great rates. We got a great premium return. And I mean, I'm constantly checking very bank for all the bank rates. And just to clarify too, I wanted to clarify also with the Silicon Valley and signature banks and inform everyone that it has no bearing on the town and that the town does not and has not done business with either one of those banks. And I've also been reassured and I can reassure the town that the town's business deposits are insured, safe, and secure.
Thank you very much. I don't know if we want to comment on our S&amp;P ratings. I know we had a ratings call or ratings meeting with them and.
Yeah, we had the triple A ratings from the S&amp;P.
So I think that just for the town that we maintained our top rating in terms of our credit status, which is, which is great.
Yeah, no, definitely. And I think it was noted that, you know, the things that S&amp;P looks at and is, you know, watching us manage going forward is our free cash balance and our debt and pension obligations. And as long as we maintain those the way we have, it seems we can expect to maintain that rating. But it was appreciated that they informed us what they're looking at, so we know.
And knowing that we had the great ratings too, because we had 10 bids on one and nine bids on the other. So it goes to show you that everybody wants our business.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Should we vote?
We've not actually voted yet. I feel like I know how it's going to go.
Yeah.
See a show of hands? Five to zero, five being present. Pardon us while we continue to sign.
And to thank you for all your work on this too. Much appreciated.
I need stamps. We're about halfway done. Got changed. Yeah.
Can I just ask, Linda? Linda, can I ask what this one is? Just, it's thicker, so I just want to make sure. Okay, so it's just, okay, so it's only one of these. Okay. All right. Well, no two signature pages, but okay, okay. Same document. Okay.
It's signing with a paper.
I know.
It's two on that one. I used to type in. The last one. All of them have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. So at 6:30, we have site plan review or overview for Six Pillows Road. At 6:35, is everyone here for that? People are comfortable starting? Okay. If the applicants could come forward?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. One of us. Nice to turn around. Fine.
Welcome. If you could just introduce yourself, Spohs.
My name is Imad Zorain from Devala Zorain, a professional civil engineer, representing Lafayette.
My name is Maynajin Sayad, and I work on the Board of Boros Islamic Society. We thought of giving you a little bit of overview and a little bit of history of who we are. And we started basically in the month of March of 2021 on a lead premises. And we are registered as a nonprofit organization under 501(c)(3). And we basically started this because there is no place of worship for Muslims of Metro West community anywhere between Framingham to Worcester. So this was, all these Boros towns, North Boros, South Boros, West Boros, Mal Boros, these are very, very underserved in terms of.
Under us. Nice to turn around.
Got you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. If you could just introduce yourself, sorry.
My name is Imad Zorain from Deva Zorain, a professional civil engineer, representing Lafayette.
My name is Maynadin Sayad, and I work on the board of Boros Islamic Society. We thought of giving you a little bit of overview and a little bit of history of who we are. And we started basically in the month of March of 2021 on a lead premises. And we are registered as a nonprofit organization under 501(c)(3). And we basically started this because there is no place of worship for Muslims of Metro West community anywhere between Framingham to Worcester. So this was the, all these Boros towns, North Boros, South Boros, West Boros, Mall Boros, these are very, very underserved in terms of a safe prayer space. And as you must know already, that most Muslims pray five times a day. So especially the Friday congregational prayers are the most important for for practicing Muslims. So this was a need that was felt. And we lead the premises and started inviting people. And we grew from strength to strength. And before we knew it, there were around 250 worshippers coming every week. And it continues to this day. So and in addition to that, we started offering more, more services. So we started with humble beginnings. As you can see, just very bare bones hall. And that's all we need really for prayers. And and then we gauging the community interest, we expanded our activities and we started youth group activities for boys and girls and community outreach and sports and indoor games. And with the kind of feedback we have now, we even have future plans such as opening a food pantry for the needy and soup kitchen, sandwich drives on a regular basis, and also some summer programs for adults and seniors in the community. So why are we looking to move? Basically, the current facility, 182 Turnpike where we are, it is up for sale. The landlord has, I believe, actually sold the property and they requested us to vacate the property. Even then, moving became inevitable in any way because we have outgrown the facility. So we need a facility that could accommodate the growing community in the Metro West. So we also have a desire to expand the current program offerings. And our end goal is to build an active and healthy faith-based community that is productively engaged with the with the community at large. Basically, that is our end goal. So this is what we bought, Six Bellows Road, prime location, easily accessible, about 6,000 square feet of usable space. And we are planning an occupancy of around 400 worshippers on a 1.5 acre land roughly, give or take. And we bought it for 1.8 million. And we closed the property on 6th July last year. Now we are in the process of obtaining permits to undertake reconstruction and actually move into the building. And because we are now changing, it used to be a preschool. Now we are changing it to a place of worship, public assembly area. So the change of use figured a lot of new rules. Fire sprinkler system is one of the major safety issues, and we are going to install a new one. And parking is also a little less. We have currently about 20 parking spaces, 27 parking spaces. And we are trying to increase that to accommodate for this increased attendance. So we prepared a site plan, which our site plan engineer is going to go into detail, more detail about that. And we are still working on the finer details of MEPs, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing details. And those would be submitted very shortly. So this is where we did the first piece of work. We did some soil testing for this facility. This is what it looks like right now inside. And this is what it is going to look like in future. As you can see, on the left-hand side, it's all prayer space for men and women. We pushed all the bathrooms and babysitting rooms to the right side. And so this is the reconfiguration and reconstruction we are going to undertake. So this is the proposed site plan. Would you want the full version?
Yeah. Do you like me to go through the whole site plan?
This is the site plan, basically.
That'd be great. If we could at least.
You want me to reduce the size?
If we got a sheet two.
Okay.
Going down. The other way, the other way.
This one?
No, no, the other way, yeah. More, more, more.
This is the parking?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah.
So this is the, this is, again, for the record, my name is Imad Zorain, a professional civil engineer. This is the existing condition plan as, no, no, leave it, leave it.
This is the existing condition? This is the existing condition plan?
I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the existing site, you know, the building is about 6,000 square feet with parking in the front of the building. There's about 27 parking spaces currently in the front with a one curb cut off Bellows Road. You probably, most of you know, Bellows Road is forks off Route 9, just past Lyman Street. With the back of the of the building is all playground area for the for the preschool. Go to the next one. So the proposal is basically reshape the front parking, keep it similar to what we had, just make it more efficient parking, and then replace the backyard area that has all the playground equipment into parking spaces. We're maintaining the existing curb cut that's going to be unchanged. Currently, there's about 27 parking spaces, and we're adding 60 more parking spaces for a total of 87 parking spaces with handicap spaces as required, sight lighting, you know, to provide secure and lit parking lot with shielded lights all facing down. This just shows the, you know, we took the wet town of Westboro fire, big fire engine, ran it through the main corridor of the site, and it goes through no problem. And then currently, the site all drains internally within all leaching basins. There's no discharge from the site itself. And we maintain the same characteristic. The new, all the new pavement in the back, we're catching all the runoff, bringing the roof runoff, and providing a pretty, pretty large recharge system, that rectangular, the shaded rectangle you see in the back. We've done some soil testing, it's all sand and gravel back there. So there's good percolation rate. And we've designed it for 100-year storm, basically. Bringing a water line from Route 9 for a new sprinkler system with a hydrant located right in front of the building. And then we're just landscaping basically to augment what's there. I mean, the site currently, there's a lot of mature landscaping within the site, a lot of mature trees, which you can see in the back. There's a lot, a lot of pine trees. We kept the parking off those trees. It's the area between us and the post office. There's a lot, a lot of big trees. We kept all those trees. And then we added, we augmented that with additional, you know, building foundation planting and additional trees. That's pretty much. And as you know, we're before the planning board for site plan approval next Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions?
So I do have a few questions. And I don't know if these may be for the applicant, but may need some clarification from our town planner. I don't know if we should hear from our town planner first, if he has any comments to make. So let me answer some of the questions. I don't want to. Okay. I mean, I just don't want to ask the questions if Jim is already planning to address those if he had remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the record, Jim Robbins, town planner. And thank you for the applicant's very good developed plans. Thank you. As you know, this is a former daycare facility, and it abuts the U.S. Post Office in the rear. It also abuts the medical facility that we know as UMass Memorial, South County at 159 East Main Street. The proposal is to remove the playground in the rear to expand their parking. The landscape plan is robust. It's a very good landscape plan. They also submitted a photometric plan for the lighting, and it meets our standards. So I don't have any issues with that. They also submitted a truck turning template plan, which they showed. I don't know that they explained it. But it's in their plans and was reviewed by the fire department. That will be brought up at the planning board meeting next Tuesday night when they come in for their public hearing. The fire department has submitted comments. The Board of Health submitted comments. The engineering department, their drainage facility, their drainage facilities will work. I'm not concerned about that. The real issue is the shortfall of parking. As you know, this site triggered site plan review. We have two criteria that trigger site plan review. First is if you modify or alter or create or subtract six or more parking spaces. So they need to do that. And a change in use. So this has gone from a private daycare facility to a place of worship. So that's a change in use. The parking requirements for a place of assembly, which is a place of worship, requires 40 more parking spaces. They have reached out to their abutter at the U.S. Postal Service. And the abutter has sent us a letter of acknowledgement that they can use 40 spaces in the rear of the post office. So as you can imagine, we were concerned about that initially because, as you know, anybody that's familiar with the Westboro Post Office, they park their trucks behind the building. But in looking at their parking plan, each truck has a number in each space has a corresponding number where the trucks park. And there are additional spaces for employees or just overflow. They should be able to accommodate it. They'll have to consolidate and stay on one side. They'll also have to provide an access way, which I don't see on this plan, but they're aware that they're going to need to provide that. So the grass strip between them and the post office is actually to their rear. They'll have to build a sidewalk so that someone who's coming from the post office can easily get to the new temple.
Thank you, Jim. That's helpful. So that would bring the, you said an additional 41 spaces. So that would bring.
Forty.
Oh, 40. Thank you. Sorry. I thought 41 was an odd number, but. So that would bring total parking spaces to about under 130, right?
127. 127.
27. Thank you.
So just a little bit of, what would be the duration of the arrangement with the post office? How many years are they willing to commit to that?
We, there is no limit set to that agreement right now. It, the post master that we spoke to, he indicated that it will be indefinite as long as we are not causing problems to their employees or to their trucks. And and this is a matter for one and a half hour in a week. So we are anticipating no problems in that area because the maximum attendance in this space is only between 1:30, 1 o'clock to 2:30 on Fridays only.
Sure. So your peak times are on Fridays, your peak worship services.
Our congregational prayer, something equivalent to a Sunday Mass would be on Friday afternoon. So we are not anticipating much of a problem.
Just to point to that also, which a problem we have currently at 182 Turnpike, the service can be broken up into more than one service. So it doesn't have to be just one service. So they could do a red shift if parking becomes, becomes more of an issue.
Okay.
Which is what we are doing right now. At the current facility also, there is not enough parking. So we broke the congregations into two.
Sure.
So that's very much a possibility. Some prayer places do try three congregations in a week.
Okay. So I think my concern would be just even with 100. So I appreciate the well-thought-out plan, all the detail and the work that's gone into it. So thank you very much. You've clearly checked the requirements for many key areas that our planning board and other departments would look for. I would be, you know, I still would share some concern in our board's comments back to the planning board with only having 127 spaces for services that are upwards of 400, even though, yes, they can be split. But what I heard was, you know, in the in the packet we've received is 300. Now I'm hearing 400. So I'm sure there's some level of carpooling. I'm sure people come together for worship. But you always have to plan for worst-case scenario. So that that would be my concern with the plan as presented. So I would encourage the applicant to continue to work with other abutters for solutions. Hopefully, your congregation will continue to grow. And so you want to have that problem, right? But it seems like you may already have that problem now before you're even in the new location. The other, the other question I had when I looked at the documents, and I don't know where it is, but I saw that the building occupancy says 300. And I, Jim, I'm looking to you. It's a footprint, but now it's change of use. Is there potential that that occupancy would change from 300 upwards of?
That's a, that's a question for the building commissioner.
Okay.
And I know that the building commissioner's been working with the applicant. That's one of the reasons that they've scaled back their congregation meetings.
Okay. So that would be another question that, you know, just to understand, you know, is the proposed plan, you know, adequate for what they need? And are we approving that? Or, you know, we want them to, we want to set you up for success, not, you know, a plan that's not going to meet your, your needs. And I guess the only other, I did see that children are part of your services. So do you anticipate any need, not in the actual structure, but on the property, you know, for for the kids to get outside and?
Activities for the kids outside or inside?
Right now, we are not planning any activities outside, only indoor activities.
All inside? Okay, okay. And where is the, my final question is, where is the main entrance to the building?
That center in the front. And there, there's entry in the back.
The main entrance would be?
Yeah, that's center in the middle.
Okay.
That's the existing entrance, and we're keeping that.
Okay, so my question, and that was not clear to me when I looked at the plan. So the handicap or ADA spots don't seem to be reasonably, what I would think, accessible or nearest to those entrances. So that would be the other comment that I would include for the planning board.
I locate in a safe, in the safest, the closest one would be across, across the aisle from the entrance, but they would have to cross the drive aisle.
Yeah, no, I mean.
I mean, I.
Yeah, you guys could work through the details of where to put it. But as I'm looking at this.
It looks like the two in the back are adjacent to a rear.
There's two in the back.
One entrance here, two entrances in the back, one here. And there are total six entrances to the building.
Okay.
And that's why the closest for handicapped access would be one here. That's why.
Okay, so so the accessible entrances will be accessible for those that need them?
Yeah.
That's building code too.
Okay.
So the building commissioner will take care of that.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. I'd love to hear the board's comments.
Yeah, thank you for providing the details in the plan. Terrific plan, and I welcome you all to our community. A couple of questions. I guess the first one is in regards to that pathway that needs to be created between the U.S. Postal Office and. I don't know how far the distance is, but I'm imagining with Ramadan that there's going to be evening prayer and evening services. So I'm wondering, I'm just thinking that the planning board should consider a requirement around lighting that, or that walkway between. Just a comment there. My, so really just a comment, not a question. My other question is a little more difficult here. With that increase in parking, I am concerned about Bellows Road. That is a road that is highly traveled, and a lot of people are coming right off of Route 9, unfortunately, at a higher speed than they should in many cases down that road. And I would just caution you to let your congregation know that they should not park on that street because of safety issues. So just a, just a message to them to be careful.
There's no room to park here anyway. There's no.
I'm sorry.
It's tight enough that there's no room to park.
It is, it is. But just with your capacity concerns that you're already dealing with, it sounds like. So and and then another one is, the town planner, I'm just curious, Jim, is there a requirement on the increase in size of this lot based on going from so many parking spaces to so many more parking spaces that there would be a requirement for EV parking spot, EV charging station?
It's possible the planning board might do that.
Okay, all right.
We do that in all our commercial buildings. This is a place of assembly. We encourage them at the schools, so I'm sure they'll encourage it here too.
Okay. And it does mention stormwater. I think you mentioned the back of the lot and the maintenance of that. We have an upcoming stormwater article on our town meeting in a week and a half or so. And I'm just curious, do we know if this property, is this a private stormwater management? Or is?
Private.
It is private, private maintained. Okay. That was really it, just my comment. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Most of my questions have been answered. A couple of comments agreeing with Patrick about lighting the walk, you know, between the post office and the back parking lot. And I'd also suggest that there'd be a crossing point for the parking lot defined near that walkway with a marked crosswalk, just so that as people are backing out of spaces and driving through, there's a visual reminder that you'll have families and children crossing in traffic. And I know at times on Bellow Roads, there has been signs warning people coming off Route 9. When the daycare center was active, there was a sign that said, you know, daycare driveway, slow. So if there could be some consideration of some blind drive, you know, the driveway is not fully visible as you come off Bellows. So, you know, some signage warning of the hidden driveway or cars entering, you know, slow down type of caution so that it's. slow down type of caution so that it's just a safer, you know, for your congregants to get out of the driveway.
Going close to last, mine, my two big comments are occupancy, and Shelby hit that, and the street parking. But I guess to follow on, I think the sign's a great idea, but I'm not sure if there are signs today that say no on-street parking, but if not, I think...
I don't know that there are, but the permit, our site plan review approval would not allow it. We don't allow it in any, we don't allow any off-site parking unless there's an agreement with an existing parking lot. We don't allow public ways to be used for parking.
So I guess the question would be, would we want to, would the planning board potentially want to require signage? I know it's not required, but to basically say no.
Make a note of that. We can ask that to be done. I think that you can require it. The selectmen control the ways, the public ways in town. So if you say so, I think that's going to be...
I would like to say so. I just think that to the point that to basically just ensure no on-street parking.
Just a note on Bellows Road, it's actually, part of it is mass highway jurisdiction from our side over. It is mass highway.
I'm sure they won't want you parking on there.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So you can't park on highways either, right? No, and really, it's about safety of everyone, so trying to make it better. But that's all that I had.
All right, thank you. Now, I think that was pretty comprehensive. Thank you, everybody. I guess if we review what our comments are to the board, it's just kind of, sort of a review of the parking situation, you know, going forward to ensure that there seems to be enough parking. You know, now there is, but as a congregation grows, how do we know? The lighting on the pathway and then also from Patrick, and then the follow-on from Alan, that there be some sort of lining of that pathway. So it's identified for folks. And then, so there's, the no parking signage may not completely be necessary, but is it worth a sign informing people that this is a house of worship and there's going to be increased traffic here? Is that worth a sign? Those, I think, were the comments that I heard. Did I miss anything or...
The EV was one, about potential for EV.
Thank you.
The only other thing, I guess, it's not just about working on the parking plan, but I'm concerned, I want to welcome them here, and they've already purchased the building, but I'm really concerned that with the number of spaces presented and the post office, there still isn't enough for their current capacity. I think that I'd like to see that stressed in the comments to the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and I'd encourage other, I don't know to what extent the town is working with the applicant to engage or that we can engage other abutters to facilitate conversations. I think that would be helpful if we're not doing that already.
For additional parking, yes. Yeah. And I don't know what the capacity is at the medical center. There might be some capacity there, I don't know.
Well, there's also 110, which is right next to there that has a ton of parking.
That's true. Currently, it's underused.
And I would imagine it's underused. So to the extent that our economic development coordinator or planning board, community development can facilitate that, that would be great.
In terms of parking situation, ma'am, if I may add, we are also in consultations with Westboro Executive Park, our next-door neighbor.
That's who she means.
So we are likely to get some there, too. I'm just not, it is not done yet.
Yeah, you don't have it yet, I understand. I just, you know, again, want you to be successful when you cut the ribbon to welcome everyone.
But there's a lot of unused parking right next to us. If you see the line at the bottom of the sheet, that's the parking for the executive park.
Oh, yes.
It's totally unused.
Right, right. But you need, for sustained parking, for sustained solution, you need permission to park there, you know, I think...
No, no, I think, like you said, we're, they're in discussion with them.
Right, yep.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming before us.
Good luck.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have the exercise of right of first refusal for 22 Lackey Street.
Yep, so we received on February 10th, we received notice of sale at 22 Lackey Street and being a Chapter 61 property, the board has the opportunity to exercise its right of first refusal. Our typical process is that the planning board, the open space committee, and the conservation commission all take up this consideration and then give comment back to the board with a recommendation. So you do have in your packet memos from both the open space committee and the planning board stating that they had taken a vote that the board not exercise its right of first refusal. We do have comments from the conservation director. However, they will take a vote at their meeting on March 21st. So if the board wants to wait until after that vote is taken, you could do so. Also, I know that, well, I guess I would stop there if the board has any questions or if you want to move forward tonight or not.
What's our timeframe for...
So you have 120 days from February 10th, so it's early June is when you have to make a decision.
I would recommend we hold off. And I mean, part of our process is to get those commissions, I'd wait for conservation and put in our next.
Yeah, I'd also be interested in whether or not the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust finds interest in this property. And I know you're meeting on the 13th of April, or that will be your next meeting?
Actually, we have a meeting next Tuesday, on the 21st.
Oh, okay.
And so I made the chair of the trust aware of it. I'm not sure he's going to put this on the agenda, just looking at the documents and the costs that the trust would incur to acquire the property and remove the Chapter 61 restriction. It would not, it's pretty far outside of our, you know, the trust's guidelines for subsidy.
Well, and my, my other question with that for the trust to consider is that right now, it looks like it's owned for one, a single residence versus multiple. So that may not be in line either.
Yeah, it's, I mean, that's not, that's now out of line, and, you know, zoning residential can be a duplex with a special permit through the planning board. The trust always has the option to do friendly 40B for higher density, although septic will be an issue.
Right.
The size of the septic field required would be an issue for that, so.
But I think if we wait, at least that can be considered if the trust chooses to. And if not, I think going forward as these come up, that we should consider adding the trust to the consideration.
Right, so that was my recommendation in your packet, was that we create an actual policy, because currently, we have a town meeting vote, and we have some minutes that we refer to in terms of who you receive recommendations from. So creation of a policy so it's easy to understand exactly what's coming and who's going to be considering the right of first refusal and adding the Affordable Housing Trust to that list. So we'd have four.
Okay. So I think we wait.
So on adding the Affordable Housing Trust, is that something that we would vote on?
I think we can hear from the Affordable Housing Trust at the 28th meeting, because they're going to consider it on the 21st.
Whether they want to be included.
I don't think you need to vote on it. When we create the policy, you would vote on the policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So folks are comfortable with moving forward two weeks on this to our next meeting?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have annual town meeting warrant and fiscal year 2024 budget discussion. And the first presentation would be from the planning board. I don't know if you had anything...
Nope, you have your, the planning board PowerPoint in your packet. So the town planner is going to go through the zoning articles on the town meeting warrant.
Welcome, Jim.
Thank you.
Do you know how to get these to work?
I don't know. I tried to...
Jim probably hits the power button on the...
Jim, do you know how to get these to work?
The top button on the left is the power button.
I did the, I hit the power button.
Put it up here.
Signal, child signal.
And Sean, just while Jim's getting ready, I do know that members of the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee are presenting to FinCom tonight. Their meeting starts at 7:00, and they're scheduled to present right away, top of the agenda. So I'll watch my phone to make sure that things are running on schedule, but they're last, so we should have plenty of time.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks. Got it on mine. I got it. I hit it.
That's volume.
Not on me.
Let's be up.
As far as I know, they should come up.
Did you get it?
Connection.
That's fine. Sorry, that's okay, as long as they can see it. Sean can share it with Ian.
He can share.
Every time I move it, it goes off.
I've got the...
I have it inside.
I've got the, right here. I can always just move over.
I can't move because it breaks.
You good, you good?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for having me. For the record, I'm Jim Robbins, your town planner for two more weeks.
Congratulations.
Got a chance to throw that in. So we have three zoning articles on the warrant. The first two have to do with our recodification effort. I know you're all aware that we hired a company called General Code a couple of years ago to do a complete reorganization and recommend changes to the bylaw. The reorganization effort, and so I'm going to show in my presentation, was done in concert with our zoning review committee, which is made up of the chairman, the zoning board of appeals, the community development director, myself, and one member of the planning board. So there were four of us looking at these bylaws for the last two years to try and make them more intuitive without making any changes. And that's the first article, Article 32. And then, working with the consultant to make them more efficient, to change words that need to be changed, to bring them into conformance with the State Zoning Act and any other state legislation that we would require to be in conformance, and to make some small changes. And I use the word small because, as you'll see, they are really small. So when we get to the next article, Article 33, although there are 75 items that we are changing, and they're all listed in the warrant, my approach to presenting them is to explain the general changes, which are only word changes, no meaning changes, and then to talk about what we consider to be the most significant changes, rather than addressing all 75. And I plan to speak with the town moderator to ask him if he will allow us to move, the article is printed in the warrant, and then to allow the voters to call out any item that they want discussed. So of the checklist of 75 items, I'm hoping there'll only be a few, and I'm prepared to explain 15 of what I consider to be the only significant items. And that's all I'm going to do tonight. But I allow you to please ask any questions of the 75 you wish. You'll probably be tired after the second page. So Article 32. Okay, good. The purpose of this article is to codify the existing zoning bylaws through the reorganization and renumbering of the current bylaw language and content to produce a more understandable and intuitive set of regulations. As I said, in 2021, the town hired General Code, a zoning bylaw review company, offering legal review and recodification services for municipalities desiring to update their zoning bylaws. And I have to say, I'm very impressed with General Code. They've actually done this for 124 communities. So they're not amateurs. They've been at this for a long time. They've had a lot of experience. And it was at their suggestion that we are formatting these changes the way we are. So we're following their recommendation as how we're presenting this at town meeting. So together with the planning board zoning review group composed of the building commissioner and economic development director, the chair of the zoning board of appeals, the town planner, and one member of the planning board, we worked to reorganize and renumber the existing zoning bylaws. It was a two-year effort, and it resulted in reformatting the bylaws. And I keep using that word, reformatting, because we're not changing any content at all. This is all only about reorganizing. The effort by General Code, however, did suggest content amendments, which will be the subject of the next article, Article 33. But this Article 32 only proposes reorganization and renumbering of the existing bylaws. And the reason that we did that is because we don't want the format to fail. If someone doesn't like the word changes we made in the second article, that's fine, this one can still stand alone. And this is important, and I'll explain to you why. So this is an organizational change only. The existing bylaws will be organized in a new format with new sections and numbering. The existing language and content remains unchanged. There's no new language or regulatory changes. So I don't know how well you can read this, but this shows the proposed format on the left, and you'll see the legal squiggle, I call it, for denoting section. And then in parentheses after each section, you'll see the existing section of the current bylaws. So if someone were to say, well, where's the dimensional table? They can find it under the old organizational section, but we're showing the new organizational sections, which are more intuitive. And I'll give you a good example of that. So look at Article 4, that says zoning districts. You can see we've numbered them 4.1 through 4.10. But under the old bylaws, they were in the 200 section, the 400 section, the 500 section. And as some of you know, when we had printed, only printed bylaws, no electronic bylaws, we had to add new zoning bylaws at the end of the old zoning bylaws. So they weren't always intuitive. We were adding new bylaws when they should have been inserted into a previous section, but because of the old numbering, we couldn't insert them there. We had to create all these new sections, which weren't well-organized. I'm just continuing through the new organization and the old organization. So the benefits to amending the bylaws, the newly codified bylaw will be better organized, easier to understand, easily searchable, so they'll be electronic. If you go to the table of contents and you say, I want to see the dimensional schedule, you just click on it and it takes you there, as opposed to scrolling down the pages. So that will be a much-needed tool. They'll be easier to modify in the future. As I mentioned earlier, we can insert the new change, any changes in the future, right in where they belong, where it makes sense. Because oftentimes, we get calls from a developer or their attorney, and they'll say, where do I find the following? It seems like it should be under this section, but it doesn't give me the information I need. And I have to say, well, it's really not there. Let me tell you where it is. This is intended to make remote searching of our bylaws much easier.
Jim, a quick question before you move to the next article. Will the legacy numbers remain, or will those be sunsetted at some point?
So they could remain if you would...
Is the follow-up question to that?
Jim, don't you, are you going to have in the back of the zoning, the history of when things were changed? Because we did fully replace our zoning 20 years ago, maybe more, and it was similar. So the new, it fully replaced, so there was no reference to the old bylaw, but it's in the history of the bylaw, so you can go get it.
As long as it's in someplace that someone could quickly reference, 4.2 was 5,700.
So that's a really good suggestion, but what Christie says is true. Like, if you looked at our bylaw online today and you went to the back of the bylaw, it lists all the town meeting articles that created the changes, including the warrant article number and the date of the change. So we could add that without this having to be part of the zoning bylaw, because that's a historical reference. It's not part of the substantive portion of the bylaw. So that, in other words, you don't need to approve that at town meeting.
If I can, just a follow-up question. Are there any legal concerns? You know, I'm thinking of legal cases that might be going on with landowners, with zoning issues that might be going on where they're referencing the current... with zoning issues that may be going on where they're referencing the current pre-change. Is there any concerns or is there any requirement to provide that linkage?
So the bylaw as written in your warrant says that the changes are made in that any subsequent, I'm sorry, any predisposed changes or court cases, legal cases, would remain unchanged. So if you had a request to build a commercial building and you were under the old bylaw, when you put your request in, when you filed your application, your bylaws are frozen at that point. So if you, if something that you're proposing to do would be changed by any changes at town meeting, it would not affect you. Once you put your application in, the zoning bylaw says, this is the state zoning bylaw, so it's not just unique to Westboro, that your grandfather, the free, the zoning is frozen at the time that you make your application.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Might have been answered.
Thank you. Good job.
That's pretty straightforward. Thank you very much, Jim. Hey, I think we move on to Article 33.
Okay, this is the one that's going to freeze your brain. As I said in the opening to this, there are 75 what we consider to be substantive changes. And my presentation will explain what that means. So the purpose of Article 33 is to bring the town zoning bylaws current with various state laws and statutes and to make the bylaw terminology consistent with contemporary language and understanding. There will be, this will be accomplished by adopting the proposed general and specific revisions to the zoning bylaw. I make that distinction because I'm going to explain what a general revision is and what a specific revision is. The proposed changes bring the town zoning bylaws into conformance with state laws and statutes. The changes make the bylaws more understandable and enforceable. The changes remove inconsistency and redundancy, streamlining the permitting process. So what are general revisions? These revisions are not substantive in that the meaning or intent of the terminology is not altered. These revisions update the bylaw to be consistent with state law and statute or make terminology consistent with contemporary language. So for example, general revisions. References to Massachusetts general law are standardized in the bylaws format as MGL chapter and section. The term building inspector, wherever it's shown in the bylaw, and zoning enforcement officer are amended to building commissioner. So wherever the bylaw formally said building inspector or zoning enforcement officer, it's a little confusing because, as you know, we call that person the building commissioner. So wherever those terminologies are, they're amended to read bill in the zoning bylaw at a previous town meeting. References to the single residential zone are amended to single resident, single residence zone amended to single residential zone. References to special permit granting authority are amended to SPGA, to just shorten that terminology. So these things occur throughout the bylaw many, many times. And we're letting you know that we call, we consider these to be general revisions. They don't change any meaning. It's just new terminology.
It's just kind of housekeeping, as we call the past housekeeping issues for these.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
We've done this before. Okay, specific revisions. What are they? These changes are considered substantial amendments to the language. It may have been added or deleted, or the meaning may have been altered. There are 75 such revisions and all are listed in the warrant. The planning board felt that some of the listed substantive changes should be further explained as meaning may have been changed or regulations added or redefined. Specific revisions are noted here, refer to the noted revisions in the warrant. So what I'm going to do is we, the zoning review group, and reviewed by the planning board after the zoning review group, picked out the ones that we thought could be confusing or that might need more explanation. So I'm going to go through them if that's all right with you. There's 15. So if you, if you look at your warrant, you'll see there's a number 13 and a number 14. We didn't find anything specifically concerning until we got to number 13. So Section 2.3(c)(1) is amended to change, shall lapse within six months to shall lapse within a period of not more than three years. So then I've provided an explanation of what this means below. The State Zoning Act, Chapter 48, was amended by executive order to extend the life of a special permit before it lapses to three years. The governor did that. Part of that was COVID and actually prior to COVID. So our bylaw has said two years and in some cases, six months. But we want to bring our bylaws consistent with the State Zoning Act. So we've amended that to say two years. And this is a business-friendly change. An applicant receiving a special permit must exercise its right under the permit within three years of the day the permit was granted. Any questions?
Just one, I guess just in general, did the whole planning board, did they already review these and voted on these?
And they have voted them, as written in the warrant.
Okay, thank you.
That would be reported out at the beginning of the article at town meeting. Number 14. Section 2.4 lead-in paragraph is amended to change 75 days to 100 days. This change refers to the number of days that a permit granting authority for variances, zoning board of appeals, has to act after the filing of an appeal, application or petition. The change is necessary to conform again with state statute. I think that's pretty straightforward, but it is a change. Section 2.8 is amended to change the fine amount from not more than $100 for each violation to the maximum fine allowable under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 7, except where another penalty is provided. This amendment is to come to conformance of the state statute regulation, regulating regarding violations under the provision of a zoning bylaw or any of the conditions under which a building or occupancy permit is issued or any decision rendered by a special permit granting, a permit granting authority or a special permit granting authority. Again, this is to make our bylaw consistent with state statute. And you're going to see that a lot in these revisions. And the reason for that is lots of times, an applicant may appeal a ruling on a fine. They'll say, you're being unfair to me. Or they're saying, your fine is too much. And we want to be able to quote the state statute that allows us to do this. The other reason for this is if the state fine changes, our bylaws change with them. Instead of if we said, well, the state bylaw currently says $200 for each violation. And if we write $200 and the state statute goes up to $300, we're no longer in conformance. This allows us to consistently track the state legislation and not have to come back to town meeting. Number 27. Section 4.3(c)(2a) is amended as indicated. At the request of the owners, the town may engage a professional hydrologist or engineer to determine more accurately the location and extent of an aquifer or recharge area or to review information submitted by the owners and may charge the owners for all or part of the cost of the investigation. The underlined words are added for clarification. Mass. General Law, Chapter 53g, states that town have the right to require third-party reviews where the board or its staff are not qualified to conduct the review. The cost of the third-party review is paid by the property owner or the applicant. And as you all are aware, we already do this. But this needed, this change needed to be inserted in that specific section. And this is under the Aqua Protection District in our bylaw. Any questions about that? Number 31. Sections 4.4e3 and 4.7e3 are amended to change multiple buildings to multiple uses. This is an important distinction. This section of the bylaw refers to uses and not structures. The language has been corrected to avoid confusion as the terms are not interchangeable. And oftentimes, people do interchange those two and don't understand that they're not the same thing. You may live in a residential district that allows residential uses, but your structure may not be a residential structure. Your garage is not a residential structure. Your barn is not a residential structure. But they're allowed in a residential district because we call them residential uses. So this is an attempt to clarify, because we get questions over the phone on this often. Clear? Okay. Number 37. Section 4.h2e is amended to change two years to three years. This is what I described earlier. This refers to special permits granted for senior living projects. The change to three years is to bring the bylaw into conformance with the State Zoning Act, Chapter 48, extending the life of special permits to three years before it lapses, similar to number 13 that we already talked about. Number 39. Section 5.2b is amended to change six months to 12 months. The section refers to building permits and special permits. And this is what the section says. Construction or operations under a building permit or special permit obtained in conformity with this zoning bylaw or lawful amendments thereto shall conform to any subsequent amendments of the zoning bylaw unless the use or construction is commenced within a period of not more than 12 months. There's the change, after the issuance of such permit. This change brings the law into conformance with recent amendments to the state statute, extending the time for construction projects to commence. Number 56, we're getting to the end. Section 6.7f1 is amended to change licensing board to select board in the last sentence. This section refers to special permits. There is no licensing board granting special permits in Westboro. A select board is the correct reference. So for your information, you probably already know this. You grant the license or special permit for an automotive service station, right? Automotive repair shop, a liquor license, all of those things. You don't have a licensing board. You are the licensing board. Number 63. Original Section 4430, swimming pool fencing is deleted. Fencing for swimming pools is regulated by the building code, not the zoning code. And this has been in our zoning for years. And builders will come up and say, you don't have the right to regulate my fence under the zoning. The building code determines that, and that is correct. The building commissioner confirmed that. Number 67. Section 8.2d5 is amended as indicated. Signs which are mounted to any motor vehicle or trailer which is parked for the sole purpose of advertising to, of advertising a business established on or off premises are prohibited. So think of a van that's advertising ACME, you know, plumbing supplies. And they park their truck all day long at a coffee shop because they know coffee shop is a high-traffic area. It becomes promotion for the business. And our bylaws say that all signs promoting a business must be on the site where the business is. I know you're all familiar with that. So for years, this, we've had this bylaw. But it allowed by special permit, the selectmen to allow off-site signage on motor vehicles. That was deleted. It says the select board no longer regulates signage. You probably know that. Signed permits are granted by the building commissioner, the design review board, and the historic commission. So we had to delete that language that says issued by the board of selectmen. Number 72, almost to 75. Section 8.4g is amended as indicated. Violations of this section or any condition of a special permit or approval granted under this section shall be punished by a fine consistent with the fine structure allowable under Mass. General Law 40, Section 2117, except where another penalty is provided. The amendment concerns earth-moving activities, only earth-moving activities. Earth-moving activities are specially, specifically governed by state statute. So we're trying to bring our earth-moving into conformance with that statute. So earth-moving bylaw brings the, I'm sorry, this brings it into conformance with Mass. General Law, Section 2117, 17 reads, for prohibiting or regulating earth removal of soil, loam, sand, or gravel from land not in public use in the whole or in specified districts of the town and for requiring the erection of a fence or barrier around such area and the finished grading of the same. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to compel compliance with any ordinance or bylaw made hereunder. The penalty for violation of any ordinance or bylaw made hereunder shall be as follows. For the first offense, $50; for the second offense, $100; and for each subsequent offense, $200. So if Section 17 changes similar to before, our bylaw will change with it and we won't have to come back to town meeting. Use regulation schedule is amended in the entry for large-scale ground-mounted solar votaic installations, basically a solar field, solar farm. Under expressory uses, to change no to yes in the AE district. You know what the AE district is? It's the adult entertainment district. So we're trying to provide an alternative use rather than adult entertainment. We're making another possible attraction for them. Currently, ground-mounted solar installations are not allowed in this zoning district. The amendment would allow them in compliance with the requirements of our bylaw. Number 47. The use regulation schedule is amended in the entry of earth removal to remove footnote 1 and change S, which stands for zoning board of appeals, in all columns to SP, which stands for planning board. The SP designation changes permitting responsibilities from the ZBA to the planning board. The change is consistent with the current permitting authority in the bylaw. The planning board currently permits all activities associated with earth-moving permits. I think that's the last one. It is. Do you have any questions before I go to the summary? No?
I have, do you have one?
Yeah, I do have one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you, Jim. And first of all, I should have said at the beginning, thank you for you and the team working on this. This is a monumental effort to go through all of this and do all this work. So I have a question about one that wasn't in your list. Number 53 specifically calls out, or the part of the removal of the language was, to remove the language around special permits issued by special permit granting authorities shall require a two-thirds vote of the board with more than five members or a vote of at least four members of a five-member board and a unanimous vote of three members of the board. So my question consists, thinking that the board, I'm specifically thinking of the planning board. I'm not sure if this also applies to the zoning board as well. I'm not sure. Okay. So with the planning board, that's if it's.
It's four.
It's four members that are required. So it's like a supermajority that needs to happen now.
Yeah, that tracks the State Zoning Act. It requires a supermajority. If, even if we wanted to make it a simple majority, we couldn't. The State Zoning Act is very specific about special permits.
That was my question, is whether or not that was a state requirement. Thank you.
Any else? At the Economic Development Committee meeting earlier in the month, discussion of change number 70 came up. And I'll just read it for folks here. Section 8.2g2 is amended as indicated. And it used to say, a non-conforming sign which is removed or abandoned for longer than 30 days or destroyed by more than 35% shall not be replaced unless it complies with this bylaw. And it is being changed to, once a business closes, any non-conforming sign must be removed immediately and any new sign must conform. I guess there, you know, some of the folks on the committee had concerns.
I knew that was coming.
From 30 to zero. So I don't know if that state you're matching up with there or.
So I will, I will supply the reasoning for that change. And then I will again state that that's why each one of these is like a menu. If the moderator allows that one to be discussed, which I hope he'll allow every one of them to be discussed individually, and that one fails, it will not kill the entire article. So my explanation now is that the discussions with the design review board and with the planning board were over concerns of specific signs in the downtown, which you can probably think of them, that have been destroyed yet remain on the building for a long time. One of them has been there as long as I've been here, so 30-plus years. And it's still not fixed and it's still on the building. And when the sign was broken or destroyed, or whatever you want to call it, the owner of the sign no longer occupied the building. So there was no one there to fix the sign. And I know the objection because sometimes on a large commercial building, a tenant may leave and they don't take their sign with them. And then the owner has the sign still on the building. The question is, well, whose responsibility is it to remove that sign? Because it costs money to remove a big sign on a commercial building. That's why we said it to be removed immediately. So when a business vacates a building, they should take their sign with them instead of sticking the owner of the building, the landlord, with the sign problem.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions on Article 33? All right. 34.
Okay, so I'm just going to summarize. The proposed changes brings the bylaws into conformance with state statute. The changes make the bylaws more understandable and enforceable. The changes remove inconsistency and redundancy, streamlining the permitting process. Thank you. Article 34, this is about signage. Article 34, this is about signage. And it has two purposes. And again, I'm hoping that the moderator will allow us to take the two pieces of them separately. So number one, the first purpose is to allow projecting signs in the downtown, the downtown business district, the downtown overlay district, and the gateway to district. The design review board will require approval. The second part is to transfer the approval authority for signage permitting in the downtown, the downtown planning overlay district, historic districts, and the gateway to district, from the historic commission to the design review board. So what are projecting signs? Projecting signs are signs that are mounted perpendicular to the building facade. So I've taken some pictures. I like to do this on my travels because I actually like signs. So this was on Charles Street in Beacon Hill, very beautiful signage. And this is the same picture, but I took this without showing any faces, so that you could see that they're well above someone's head. Because one of the complaints that we used to have for years is, oh, somebody's going to bump their head. Well, these are 15 feet above the ground. The Celtics wish they had a center that was that tall. More signs, same on Charles Street. These are in a district in downtown Cleveland, and actually it's in the market district in Cleveland, historic district. This is in New Orleans, one of my favorite shops in New Orleans. And this is in Kent, Ohio. I'm going to add some more pictures of signs in Concord, Mass, that I just took recently that are quite nice. So why are we proposing this? Well, there's some benefits. It creates easy visibility for pedestrians on the sidewalk. So you can imagine you're walking down the sidewalk, building is to your side, you can't see what's on the building. But with a perpendicular sign that hangs over the sidewalk, you can see where the sign is and what the use is. They are typically found in historic downtown villages like Westboro's Town Center. They add a sense of place and attractiveness to the streetscape, and they improve business for shopkeepers. Any questions on that portion?
Yeah, so just a question on the word projected. I'm just worried that there will be some confusion there, thinking of, I can project a sign versus, I think you used a different term here just a moment ago, perpendicular?
Perpendicular, yes. And the definition said that.
Okay. You don't find that there's any possible confusion with people saying, hey, can I project a sign?
So let me go back to the definition, and you tell me. Projecting signs are signs that are mounted perpendicular to the building.
They're mounted.
Okay.
You have a couple in the downtown. The real estate agent, Sotheby's, has one.
So this is actually contained within the document?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
The definition is contained within the document itself?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
There's a definition of perpendicular. I'm sorry, definition of projecting signs.
Projected, yes.
You were thinking of ejecting signs. Second portion, transfer signage authority. Currently, both the historic commission and the design review board approve signage under differing scenarios: in the downtown business district, in the downtown planning overlay district, in historic districts, and in the gateway to district. So where are these districts? So if you look at our zoning map here, and thank goodness that's big, the district that has the red circle, you probably can't see my cursor unfortunately, but the red circle in the center of town, that's the downtown business district. It's also the historic district. It's also the downtown planning overlay district. And it's the design review board district. So currently, the requirement to apply to two different town bodies for permitting makes the process confusing and time-consuming. The design review board reviews architectural changes to building facades and signage. So if you came in and you said to me, I'm going to change the door on my building, oh, and by the way, I'm going to put up a new sign. So you would be sent to the design review board, and the design review board would approve both things. They'd approve your door, and they'd approve your sign. But if you were only getting your sign, a new sign, you would go to the historic commission. So the historic commission also reviews signage where the DRB is not involved, and it makes sense to combine the review under one authority. The DRB membership has representatives from the historic commission. The DRB has professional graphic designers and architects in its membership. That's a requirement of the bylaw. They're professionally trained to review design materials, design in materials. The historic commission supports this amendment. As a matter of fact, it was the historic commission that came to the DRB and said, we want to do this. So the benefits of the amendments. Projecting signs. Projecting signs create better visibility and identification for local businesses and shoppers, ultimately improving business and the shopping experience. They improve the attractiveness of the streetscape. They create a more historic atmosphere for the business district. The second part, transferring authority for signage approval from historic commission to the DRB. It streamlines the permitting process, reduces redundancy and confusion, and it reduces time and expense to the applicant. Questions?
I have nothing.
No?
They all make sense.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I do have just a quick question. Design review board, Jim, it's a five-member board. There are members of the historical commission that sit on there. Is that by, does the bylaw define that?
The zoning bylaw requires at least one member of the historic commission. We have two.
Okay.
Currently, we have two. It also requires an architect or someone trained in architecture or construction. It requires a graphic artist or someone trained in graphic artists. And we also require an architect. And we have all of those people on our board currently. It also requires a member of the planning board, and we have a member of the planning board.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Jim, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you for asking my question. Yes, Mark, thank you. If you could come forward and talk about the information technology initiatives.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
So I had given the board a brief overview of the website update, so Mark's just going to give you a little more detail on the website update article.
Kristi, while we're waiting for that, just a kind of question that kind of connects this next topic to what Jim just presented with the zoning. The new website, the hope there, would we be able to, I'm thinking this massive document, the zoning document, it's quite large. Jim talked a lot about being able to search and whatnot. Well, do we know if the new functionality of the website will allow us to search and review that document?
So that, so what Jim is speaking about is actually proprietary with general code. So it's called Code 360. And so there'll just be a link into that, and then you'll work right in Code 360.
Okay.
Similar to Patriot Properties and stuff for the assessors.
Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. So our town website, it's our primary communications tool for the town. Over 300,000 visits annually, more than 400,000 during the pandemic, available 24/7, 99.9% uptime. The last time we did this was about six years ago, but it was out of a necessity, and I don't know that we did, we didn't go to the next tier. We simply just did the upgrade to get us from one place to the other. We've been with Civic Plus now for about 20 years. 7,500 local government customers, so they're national. They have a large presence across the U.S., and they have a significant presence in Massachusetts with 11 out of the 14 dashboard communities using Civic Plus. So here's a different look. So 90% of all their customers are on the central platform. This is the platform that we're hoping to go to. And approximately 30% of Civic Plus customers in Mass have upgraded to this, including five of our 14 dashboard communities. And you can see, we have a couple of neighbors, Shrewsbury and Grafton, and we have some other nearby towns that are on the upgrade as well. Reasons to upgrade. It supports the communication plan, which is a recommendation from the strategic plan. We've had complaints from residents. It's outdated, search and navigation issues, out-of-date content, and certainly, we've had our fair share of complaints from staff. Difficult to use, limited customization. And so for, you know, looking for features that we would expect, a new, modern look with updated features and better navigation, residents would be able to sign up for their own account, either a standard account or a social sign-in, which would customize the experience. It'd be able to save form information. It'd be able to keep track of, you know, when you submitted, you know, requests to the town. You'd have it all right there in your own little, you know, portal. An alert center can notify citizens via SMS texts as well as email. Right now, we can only do email. We'd have a splash screen that would, you know, pop up if we wanted to, you know, highlight some information. And, you know, it could be more than just a single alert. Improved document management with all those centers there that are listed, and the website will meet accessibility standards. For us, on the staff side, there's even more benefits, I believe. The live edit, what you see is what you get, and drag-and-drop tools. So as people are looking at, you know, making changes to their own web pages, they can see, you know, what it's going to look like, and it's not as clunky as what we're dealing with right now. Increased customization, this is a big one for me, because right now, if we need to make HTML changes, we have to submit that to support. Adds a little extra time. It would be nice for us to be able to do that ourselves. Accessibility checker, which would scan content for accessibility, so we could fix it before it even went live. Improved document management, a staff dashboard, and an Intranet. And this is the budget. So the annual costs stay the same. We are not paying any more for the annual costs. Those stay the same, probably because, you know, hosting is hosting. But to transfer to the new platform, we would have to go through implementation and design, migrate our existing content, and then, of course, training and consulting. Questions?
Can we have it tomorrow?
Or yesterday?
I'll just say, I get at least a half a dozen, well, maybe two or three requests from residents to fix our website on a weekly basis. So I'm very excited, not just for myself, because it's going to hopefully be a lot easier for us to use, but also for the community to be able to use a much more functional website to find things much easier. So I'm very supportive of this.
I'll comment that in response to feedback from the community about accessibility of information, the ability to have it posted, have it found, we have a, you know, this board approved a committee handbook that provided guidance that sets expectations. Being on another board where my role, one of my responsibilities is the actual maintenance of all the documents for that board, even though I'm a technologist and working on this stuff every day, the current interface is not intuitive. It's difficult to manage. It's easy to put something in the wrong place and not be able to find it, and not know why it's not showing up on the website where you thought it would be. So the document management and the content management capabilities, I think not only will streamline the work of staff, but it will enable more volunteer members of our committees to take on and be able to maintain the information for their committees as well. And so I think it's a necessary step forward.
Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mark and Hank are here for Hakamaka.
Yeah, so Mark and Hank just arrived. If we want to take Hakamaka so they can move on with their evening.
You want to do that, and then go to interviews? Is that the plan?
That sounds good, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Sure. Thank you.
I have chauffeur duty later, so I need to be out of here. So thank you. As we're getting ready here, I think what we'll do is after the Hakamaka Pond reuse committee speaks, are people okay if we then jump ahead to number nine on our agenda, so that folks who've been waiting can speak, and then we can come back to discuss supportive warrant articles in the budget? Folks, okay with that?
I think that's great.
Okay. Just a question of the chair.
Yes. It's your first choice.
I took a shot.
Yeah.
Looks pretty easy.
Okay, great.
Technologist.
So do you need me to name an address? Is that, we're not that formal?
Please.
Yeah, for the public.
Mark Silverberg. I'm on the Hakamaka Pond reuse committee, and we're here to ask you to support Article 16 in the town warrant. The purpose of the article is, it's $30,820 that we're asking for the town, and that money will develop a work plan and a health and safety plan for certain tasks that the committee has identified that we would need to do in order to get the site open to the public. These plans are required by EPA and DEP for reasons I'll get into further in the presentation. We will also need a portion of the money to develop bid documents for installing a security fence around two landfill areas on the site. And again, I'll get into that as we go further. Let me talk a little bit about the site and the history of the site. First of all, it's at the corner of Otis Street and Smith Parkway, the train station. Here, let me get my pointer up. The water treatment plant is here, the new Amazon, one of the new Amazon buildings is here. There's a gated entrance here with a driveway to an existing building. These two open areas are the landfill areas, and this red line is the perimeter. So it's 26-acre site in total, including the pond. So the town owns the entire pond. So a little bit more about the history. This site used to be a Creosote facility, which means they had these big lagoons of Creosote tar that they would dip telephone poles into, until they figured out that Creosote was a carcinogen, and that wasn't a good idea. So in cleanup, in 1983, it was designated as a superfund site, and cleanup was undertaken by the owner of the property, Beazer Incorporated, has been responsible for all that cleanup. And that cleanup actually continued until 2019. But prior to that, in 2017, Westboro signed a notice of activity use and limitation agreement with EPA and DEP, which basically says that those two landfill areas, those open grassy areas that I pointed to, must remain secure. We can't disturb the soil. The specific uses that we can't use anywhere on the site, like schools, housing, wells, and any disturbance of any soil on the entire 26 acres, needs to have oversight. So we can't even put a fence post in without EPA approval. So the committee is recommending that we open the site for passive recreation. There's existing trails on the site. We're proposing to expand those with a long-term goal of creating a loop trail around the entire pond and leaving the perimeter fence up, but just opening a couple of access points. And I'll show you that on the next slide. All of that would be in compliance with that activity use agreement that we signed in 2017. So again, these two areas are known as Area B. Those are the. Those are the landfill areas that we cannot touch. So we're proposing, and again, this money we're asking for is not going to do any of this work. It's just to get an engineer to tell, to prepare a work and safety plan so EPA can approve this work. It's not something that I could, you know, fill out a form and ask EPA to approve. It's got to be done by what's called a licensed site professional that EPA, you know, would have to approve. So we're proposing, you know, once we figure out what it would cost, we may come back to town meeting to ask for some more money, but the idea is to put a fence around these two areas to prevent public access. There'll be a couple of gates here for maintenance, mowing, that kind of thing. There'll be an opening in the exterior fence here, just for pedestrian access. Put some boulders there to keep people from, you know, driving on, but you'd be able to walk in here, use an existing trail to here. We'll take that existing trail and extend it straight through, open the fence here, and join up with an existing trail on the property. So this whole section of the property already has this green trail that's maintained by the land trust and part of the charm bracelet. So this will all connect with the charm bracelet. There's opportunities here for an auxiliary trail that comes down along the shoreline that will not require any earth moving. It'll all be done by volunteers. You know, the big expense would be the fence, but we don't even know how much that is until we get this article approved and get that licensed site professional to prepare those bid documents. What else? Okay, so again, the funds that we're asking for will prepare a work plan that EPA would have to approve, the health and safety plan that EPA would have to approve, and then those bid documents so that we can go out and find out how much the fence would cost. You know, we really, this is the bare minimum we need to start this process of getting the site open to the public. It's a process that started in 1983, so 40 years ago. So needless to say, I'm impatient to get it open. But, you know, I want to say the committee's been very cautious about trying to move this forward in a deliberate manner and make sure that we don't bring anything precipitously to the town.
Well, thank you very much. I know everybody's very excited about this.
I have a video if you guys want to see it.
Video, sure. We don't get many videos. Drone?
Hopefully, it'll play. Last, I had, it's not up on the screen. It's not up on your screen?
Nope. Yeah, I'll bring it up the other way.
Yeah. I had this problem across the street, guys. I'm sorry. All right, well, I don't think it's that important, but it's too bad. Westboro TV was nice enough to give us a drone clip. Let's see if I can get to it this way. So this is coming from Otis Street. You see the gated access and the driveway to the building, those two landfill areas, and the pond is at the upper right. The train station is way over to the left. There's parking now all along Smith Parkway. That would be the only, that would be the primary parking for the site at this time. We're not proposing any additional parking because that would require earth moving. And then the site continues down all the way to the water treatment road, and this portion is where the existing trail is.
Fantastic. I had no idea the size of the pond, you know, how significant the size of the pond is back there.
It's a beautiful sight, Sean.
Some of us were lucky enough to take swimming lessons there before it was closed down in 83, so may explain some of my issues here, so.
The pond is more than 10 acres.
Beautiful.
It's a big pond.
Any questions?
No.
Fully supportive of it.
Sold? All right.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Perfect work. So much for your time.
Thanks for doing double duty tonight, too.
Please support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. So as noted earlier, we will skip ahead to item nine, which is the appointment of two non-golf club members and one golf club member to the Golf Club Building Use Committee. So as a reminder, at our meeting on February 14th, the board created a Golf Club Building Use Committee with the following membership. It includes one select board member, Member Johnson here, our town manager, one member of the Recreation Commission, which I think is getting selected as we speak, the golf pro, and then, you know, what you're here for tonight, one golf club member who's a resident, and two residents who are not golf club members. The charge of this committee is to present the select board with a recommendation for this space by October 1st of this year. So I know you were all sort of provided guidelines for this evening. We request that everybody keeps their remarks to three minutes. We will let you know, I think, when your three minutes are up, and then if you could just wrap up. Thank you very much for your interest. There has been tremendous interest for this. The deadline was Friday. If we not held to that deadline, there would be even more people here in this room this evening. So thank you very much. We do have, I think, one housekeeping item to talk about beforehand that we had not considered, and that is abutters to the property and sort of, you know, the board's discussion of what are their concerns about abutters being on this committee and whether or not that should be appropriate. Well, I don't know if you want to.
Sure. So all the applicants were provided guidance on the conflict of interest law related to being a party with a financial interest, which abutters are presumed to be a party with a financial interest, and so they have the opportunity to fill out one of the conflict of interest forms for the board's consideration, and you would have to approve the exemption identifying that the party was able to be objective despite the financial interest that's presumed if they're an abutter to the property. So in your packet, you have a list of abutters, which we've identified through the assessor's office, and then you have some before you, you have some completed forms, but we did ask people to either send them ahead of time or bring them this evening, so there's potential to get additional forms. So it would be up to the board if you want to make a decision at this point as to whether or not you would entertain an abutter, or you can move through the applicants and make the decision as we go or at a time of appointment.
Thoughts from the board?
So I'm willing certainly to hear from the abutters who are interested in applying.
Same here.
All right. We'll hear from them and then discuss later time. So again, thank you for your interest. You were supplied with two questions we were hoping you would answer for us today, and those are, please explain to us why you're interested in the committee, and then also what you feel your qualifications are for the committee. We'll begin with those who are current golf club members. We'll go in alphabetical order. The individuals that I have here listed, I don't know if everybody's here right now, is Clay Borland, Dan Flood, John Green, Mike Matthew, Devashish Mund, Teresa O'Day, and Katie Welch. Clay Borland, if you're here, if you could come forward.
No one likes to go first. Yes, Clay Borland, resident of Westboro, live on South Street, member of the Course. I will say, the other members of the Course that are applying are better golfers than I am, so. But anyhow, I'm in the construction industry. I have a roofing company in town for 35 years, and I've actually done some roofing on the building in the past, for a couple, for my kai tower, and I know the building pretty well. And so I'm really interested to see if we can come to a proper conclusion of what we're going to do with the building. Remove it, renovate it, restaurant, no restaurant, town building. So, you know, I golf up there a lot, and I've lived in town my whole life, so I think I can help with the committee to come to a conclusion that it's what the town wants and the town needs. So I think I can make it short and sweet and leave it at that.
Mr. Borland, thank you.
Any questions?
Just so, we're not going to ask questions just so everyone is clear, right? We're, I mean, unless there's a clarifying question.
In fairness, we would really.
Unless there's something that.
Unless there's a clarifying question, we didn't understand something. Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Fine, thanks.
Dan Flood.
I might kind of follow Clay's lead and go short and sweet. I've been a member since I was, I think, 13 years old at the country club, lived in town my whole life, have a background in the restaurant industry, just would like to see something good happen up there, whether that's we renovate the building, redesign the building, whatever's in the best interest of the people in town, and especially the golfers, who mostly financially support the facility. Right? So that's it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. John Green.
My name is John Green. I'm a lifelong resident of Westboro. Been a, started a membership at Westboro Country Club when I was in eighth grade.
John, if you could just speak into the microphones.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
When I was in eighth grade. It's a beautiful little nine-hole golf course there. I've seen it through the years with the different operators, different pros, different volumes of membership and so forth. And I think what I saw there existing was a nice little operation with a restaurant that serviced for both the golfers but for the residents of Westboro who wanted to go out and have dinner. Personally, I'd love to see if something like that could carry on. The information that I received was there were estimates on what it might take to renovate the existing building, or perhaps to even demolish it and start over. So I have quite a bit of experience in construction and renovation. I'll just bring this up a little bit. This is a building that I did, 70,000 square foot mill building down in Medway, Mass, and we went from this to this. And it was a building that a lot of people thought should have been torn down, but I was able to find a way to reestablish all the core. The frame of the building was in pretty good shape, so it had good bones, and I think the building up there at the golf course does, too. I think we need to find the highest and best use for the residents, for the golfers, for people that want to go out to dinner. That restaurant was pretty nice. It was expensive, but great food. It hired people. It served a lot of good purposes. Just walking through, and I bend down in the basement, I think there might be a way to salvage that structure without huge cost to the town or to go back and to start over again. I don't think it can go much further than it is because when I finish golf on Wednesdays or Friday nights, it's hard to find a parking space. So I have some ideas about maybe the size and what the service could be there to satisfy residents, to have a nice little operation that hires people and then provides a place for a beer and sandwich or food for the golfers as well. So hope you consider me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike Matthew, Andrews Road, 20 Andrews Road. I'm working to get my handicap down to as low as Johnny Green's and hit the ball as long as Flood's, but it'll take me a while. But anyway, while I'm interested in being on the committee, as a golf club member for over 30 years and a longtime resident of Westboro, I'd like to have some input on the future outcome of the property. Second question, what qualifications do I have that makes me a valuable contributor? I have a unique perspective with over 50 years' experience in real estate, working with builders, contractors, and as a Westboro business owner, I have an interest in seeing the property improve, whether it's to build a new building there or to renovate the existing structure. That study has to be taken on by that committee, and I'm very interested in being involved. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay. No? Here. Teresa O'Day.
It's Terry, just call me Terry. Terry O'Day, 11 Jasper Street. So first, and I'm going to probably go through two and a half minutes. Let me extend my thanks first to the select board to share my interest in participating on this Building Use Committee. I decided to apply for the position, given my belief that the Course and the property are a true gem and asset to this town. The central location is especially conducive to many uses, and given my experience both professionally and as a golfer, make me uniquely qualified to participate, I believe. As a quick overview, I've been a resident since 1994. I've been a golf member since 1995. I'm very active at the golf course and tournaments in women's league play. I've also been a member at other public and private courses, so I'm very familiar with the amenities and the requirements that the golf community needs. I've also traveled across the United States extensively and in Ireland, playing golf in all sorts of different venues. My family is a family of golfers. We're very avid about the sport. Since we joined Westboro with the family, my children have been junior players. We've been very familiar with the needs of the Westboro golf team and the coaches there, as well as, you know, playing as an adult and as a senior. My experience includes 35 years of professional experience in finance, strategic sourcing, planning, and operations. I've got an MBA from the University of Chicago, boot school business. I retired in 2020 from Boston Scientific as a VP of Finance Controller. I set up and ran a sourcing Center of Excellence for them, along with diversity and inclusion program, and of course, over the years, have reviewed numerous small and large capital investments. I've participated in many community and volunteer organizations. I'm currently Director of the Westboro Women's Club, and I've worked with our golf pro Matt Griffith on many initiatives. Won last year as a fundraiser for our Westboro High School Scholarship Program, and we're working on one now as a June Women's Awareness for Golf event, which will again be a fundraiser for the high school. My style is to be team-oriented. I'm collaborative, results-oriented, energetic, and decisive. As a golfer and a frequenter of the restaurant, intimately very familiar with the issues and the current deficits of that existing building, and I'd be working with the other members who would expect to aggressively research and vet out all possible options for the property in a fiscally responsible and objective manner. This represents the interests of the golfers, the pro shop, we can't forget that, and certainly the non-golfer residents of the town. In summary, the Course and the building is a town treasure. I'm most concerned that it will lay idle and worry further, worry about further deteriorations to that building. This is the reason why I voiced my interest in helping Westboro find the best possible future use. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Go Irish.
Katie Welch.
Good evening, everybody. It's a long night on your agenda, isn't it?
Good evening, everybody. It's a long night on your agenda, isn't it? Anyways, I've been, as many people before you, a longstanding member of the golf course. Also, prior to that, I was a member of the golf operating committee, and subsequently participated in the golf study committee. That committee at the time, we were charged with analyzing the fiscal stability of the golf course to make recommendations for the future operations. What we did is recommend at the time that the operations move from a contract operation to a town operation, which it currently is now, under the Recreation Department. And it seems that that transition has been successful, where the fiscal stability has stabilized. And we've been able to, they've been able to fund all the things that need to be taken care of, from the superintendent's role of expensive equipment and things like that, which is a big plus for the operation. Moving forward with the building use committee, it really is an, in the history of it, having different restaurants and whatnot in the food service, has really been a function that has provided a service for the golfing community, but probably more importantly, I would say, for the community at large. And I know golfing sometimes on a Sunday afternoon, I play with people from other towns, non-members. And the reason why they enjoyed coming there was to do nine holes. It was an easy two hours, and then going out for lunch or having some drinks and being able to do that. So, it was both an attraction for the revenue, you know, coming in both for the restaurant operation, but also subsequently for the golf course. The other asset that that's been able to do is that we've been able to, the golf course has been able to fund itself. It isn't a burden on the taxpayer. And, you know, let's hope to be able to keep it that way. So, there are other considerations to take into account, and that seems to be the purpose of the building use committee, to also examine other functions that could come into play. Finally, I'd just like to say you've got some good candidates here. Good luck in your decision.
Thank you very much. Very much. And before we move on to the non-golf course, folks who are interested, I would say you are most correct. We have excellent candidates here this evening, and we can't select all of you. That does not mean that your voice cannot be heard on this project. So, this committee, even if you are not selected, will post agendas for their meetings, and a big portion of this committee will be surveying for feedback from the community on this project. So, if not selected, please feel free and know that your feedback will be considered. So, thank you. All right. So, the non-golf club members, and I guess I won't list everybody off here. We'll just go alphabetically from the beginning. Skip Ashton, please.
Good evening. Hi, Skip Ashton at 128 West Main. So, I live directly across the street from the golf course. I haven't lived there all my life. We didn't move there till I was six months old. I have been a golf member in the past, not currently one, and I submitted a financial form there because I am a director butter. I've been in this town all my life, raised four kids here. I love this town. Served on the open space committee for a number of years in the 90s, helped set up the Westboro Community Land Trust, served on the planning board for 10 years, till my travel schedule with work got too much to serve there any longer. So, I believe not only should you have an a butter, it's important to consider the neighborhood. So, I know it's on Main Street. I know it's a busy street, but as someone who walks to that restaurant, did walk to that restaurant frequently, it's a community service that sits in the middle of our neighborhood from our standpoint. So, we would like to see that building used, both for the residents and for the golf course. It's a valuable resource for the town. And so, I'd like to serve in that committee to help decide what's appropriate on that. So, I urge you to consider the butters and having one on this committee, because I think it's a valuable input for those neighbors. Thank you.
Jessica Biddle. Mark Church. Boyd Conklin.
Okay. Boyd Conklin, 8 Water Street. I've also posted on this issue on Facebook, I'm Boyd Conklin and Heart of Westboro. I've helped rehabilitate 10 properties, foreclosures and rental units previously, and also submitted a slideshow of some of the tiny house I built and this kind of thing, some construction work I've done. I talked to Marcos, the chef of the Civic, and why they were moving out some equipment. They would like to stay there. The Pepcorn, Tom, apparently Tom, the owner, would like to renew the lease. And I would be interested in trying to keep the cost of it down, avoiding the, all the handicap upgrades. I understand that the town has assessed the property value, the whole property, at about 17 million. I don't, I couldn't find the actual building, but you can, supposedly you can spend a third of the building assessment in a three-year period and not be triggering the MAA, BADA requirements. And that seemed to be, I read the 176-page report, that seemed to be a big part of them measuring the countertops and the doorways and putting in, the idea of putting in push-button doors and that kind of thing. I'd like to try to get away from triggering that stuff. I can imagine that for 22,000 bucks that you guys had them in there measuring the countertops and stuff, that a lot of the work could have been done for cleaning up the grease and the outlets. So, some posters have talked about the 800,000. If you're going to use those guys that you did the assessment with, that you should just tear down the building. But it seems ridiculous. It seems like the building is solid, and there's just little stuff that needs to be doing. And I hope that net zero Westboro cult will not try to rip out all the gas and try to electrify everything in there, and put geothermal and solar in the thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lee Emery. Connor Garrity. Ted Gilbert. Brad Huff.
Brad Huff. I live at 2 Imperial Court. I am a former member of the golf club, but not active right now. But I am still, and have been for 17 years, the coordinator of the Men's Senior Golf League. So, I'm still in, I also, and I don't know, I don't think I have to fill out a conflict of interest report, even though I am an employee of the town of Westboro, as a fact that I drive a minibus for the senior center, which I've also done for 17 years. In that capacity, I get a kind of a cross configuration of people in the town and their feelings and their attitudes and what they like and don't like. But I think, and I've heard people say this before, that location is an asset to the town in some form. The golf course is pristine. I've heard many people say, and I realize this is the building, not the golf course, it's probably one of the best public courses in Massachusetts, in terms of its condition and its playability. The building is an asset too, as long as we can do something appropriate with it. I don't know the overall condition of the building. Part of the use committee, I would think, would be to understand what we have right now and imparting, understanding that, how we go forward in utilizing that appropriately. I have 37 years of experience as, I was a financial manager and controller at Polaroid Corporation, so I bring some financial expertise to the project. But I've also been a homeowner for almost 50 years, and I know maintaining my own home and trying to look at what's necessary with a building, how we go forward in looking what it is in the best interests of the town of Westboro and the people in the town of Westboro. Granted, it's at the golf course, and it needs, you know, it's a kind of a focal point there, but it's also a visible asset of the town. And I'd like to be a part of the committee that looks at how we use that appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Manaz Hulabay. Pardon me, please educate me if I can't...
Hello, everyone. Manaz Hulabay. You were close.
Thank you.
So, a little bit about myself. I live in the Prentice Forest neighborhood with my husband and two kids. And I think there are many wonderful things about the community here. We have wonderful schools. We have businesses. We have a lot of commerce. And I think this particular piece of land is a huge, huge asset in that, you know, there's so much opportunity there for the building and what people can do and how the community can utilize it. So, I think being there to help assist with this decision and what to do with it is really important, because it would have a pretty longstanding impact on the community and how, you know, the future residents of Westboro will end up using it. I do, a little bit about myself. So, I've been working in technology and finance for about 20 years. I've led large teams, five to hundreds of people, and as a project and program manager. So, I'm able to be objective and help facilitate productive discussions, and ultimately drive decisions forward, which is, I think, what the purpose of this would be. And I can say that, you know, being there to listen to feedback from the community is equally important. There'll be probably a lot of opinions and tough topics, and being able to handle that and be calm and collected and still objective about it is also very important, and I hope I can offer that. On a personal note, being a working mother of two boys, I think I know firsthand the importance of community. Having a reason to stay and play where you live is really important too, because a lot of people tend to go elsewhere, or they want to go golf, they go somewhere else. And the fact that the building is not in use, I think, is a loss for us. So, that is really important. And I also have personal experience living in other communities that have gone through development activities like Boston, through the Big Dig, and Newton, and Somerville. And I've seen what, you know, a small change can have a pretty big impact. So, I bring that with my experience as well. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matthew Jerome.
Hello. My name is Matt Jerome. I live at 20 Haskell Street with my wife, my daughter, who's in kindergarten. My reason for wanting to be on the committee, like I said, my daughter in kindergarten, my wife and I, well, my wife golfs. I try to golf, but get out as much we can, want to bring our daughter up into that golfing, you know, with her getting into the school system, getting into athletics and things like that. I just want to make sure I have a say, and I'm glad you said, you know, we'll be able to participate, even if we're not selected, just have a say in that process. You know, I've been, I'm from Massachusetts, from Pembroke. When I was growing up, golf course there kind of went under, went into disrepair, got built back up. I've been playing Westboro Country Club long before I lived here. So, just really love the course itself, the building. It's just a great kind of center to have, something to have in the town. So, I want to have a say in kind of what direction that goes in. From a experience where I think I add value, I'm a financial services consultant. What I do, I work with global asset management firms, global banks, building out their compliance programs. So, a lot of silos, a lot of stakeholders, a lot of opinions. What I do is I bring all that together, you know, delivering tough messages, hearing everything. And then also, my background is a lawyer as well. You know, I was taught in law school to kind of take arguments from all sides, understand everyone's argument, and then develop your own. So, being able to kind of listen, pull all that in, and then kind of take it all in, instead of going in with an agenda. Lastly, I was one of eight kids, third oldest, and, you know, so a lot of negotiating in that sense as well. So, I have a very, very broad background in negotiation and compromise, I guess you could say. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tim Martel. John Morrison. Getting late. Patrick Orlando. Bill Pickering. Carolyn Reagan. Caroline, pardon me. Kyle Ritchie.
Hello, everyone. My name's Kyle Ritchie of 13 Beach Street. Thank you for having me. So, again, my name's Kyle. My family moved to Westboro almost three years ago, and I could not be happier with the decision. I'm interested in joining this committee because I'm invested in our community and any way that it can be improved. I plan to be here for the long haul, raise my two, soon-to-be-three children here. I'm someone who loves the sport of golf and loves to play golf when the former allow time. I enjoyed an early career in restaurants, worked front of the house and back of the house, and I've seen the benefits that they can have on a community. And I'm also, I have a vested interest in increasing space for recreational use for all residents, but especially for the young, my kids. I'd be a valuable contributor to this committee as a neutral party. I'm relatively new to this town, but no less committed to its improvement. I do not serve any single agenda, nor do I hold alliances or allegiances towards any particular option for this space. Currently, as far as work goes, I'm an assistant principal at a K-8 school in Matapan, part of Boston Public Schools. I have significant experience in serving the school community, our students, their families, and my staff. Well-versed in equitable practices, negotiating patients, and seeing the value in all points of view. And as a caring and impartial resident, I would be honored to be a part of the committee.
Thank you. Thank you. Maura Shoney.
Good evening, select board members. My name is Maura Shoney. I live at 8 Kendall Drive. Why am I interested? I have maintained a longstanding commitment to the town's best interests, both in preserving what's invaluable here, as well as enhancing and improving things that will continue to make Westboro a uniquely special place. The country club and the building represent an important landmark and an invaluable asset as a gathering place for golfers, families and all residents of our town. The time has come to improve the structure, with both an eye on a more contemporary, efficient and attractive footprint, and as always, being fiscally responsible. When it comes to a large-scale, high-profile projects like this one, thoughtful consideration must be given to all outcomes, intended and otherwise. I am very interested in balancing the needs of all the constituents in Westboro. To do this will require open minds, a balanced approach, and a very detailed thoughtful project plan. I am very interested in ensuring that we do this right. Qualifications. I have almost 30 years of practical and very apical experience per the letter I submitted to the committee, participating on, and in many cases, leading large-scale projects in town. I have committee, board and foundation experience delivering on high-profile projects and managing capital expenditures successfully. I bring a unique ability to collaborate and work well with a broad cross-section of people in a variety of settings. I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and do the work. I take a highly thoughtful and measured approach to all that I do. I consider all options, carefully weigh consequences, and come up with sound and practical alternatives and solutions. In short, I work well with and on teams that have delivered for the town very successfully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anne Stetson. Teri Strauss. James Varner.
Evening, everybody. My name is James Varner. I've been a resident of Westboro for a little over four years now. I'm a native New Englander, but actually spent a lot of time down south in North Carolina. So, I've been, I had... So, I've been, I had a lot more golf experience down there than I did up here. I live at 12 Harvey Lane, which is just barely not abutting. It's actually in that neighborhood between the high school and the Methodist Church on the other side. So, my son and I were members for about two years while we were, you know, it was a nice COVID-friendly thing. But, you know, we still go play there at least six or seven times a summer because we can walk directly to the course. With the restaurant, we also had, you know, would walk over. We tried to support them through COVID, through takeout and everything like that. So, we're very interested in seeing exactly what can be done with the site, either to keep it as a restaurant or to keep it as something else that's a part of the community. I think we need to look at the different pieces of what we can do with the building. Obviously, we have to see if we can repair, or if we can't, what direction are we going to go. Certainly, the golf shop itself needs a little bit of TLC. I think if, and I agree with everybody that's talked so far about the golf course, it is one of the nicest golf courses in the area, certainly one of the nicest nine holes. And the golf shop needs to reflect that as much as anything else. And I think it's a sense of pride for the community and for the golfers in the community. I think a lot of people like the restaurant. We'd like to see something else there that makes sense and see how we can use the site for various things. I mean, right now, it's just closed down. So, we'll see what we can do with it. So, yeah, that's about it. I want to help support the community as much as my wife, who's a teacher at Hastings. So, thanks.
Felicia Weitzman. I did? Thank you very much.
People say Weitzman. That's Weitzman. I wrote a whole speech. Be succinct. My name is Felicia Weitzman. I live at 27 West Street, which is within walking distance of the golf course. I moved to Westboro just about one year ago from the far north suburbs of Chicago. I'm interested in being a part of this committee for a couple of reasons. But the most important reason is that my family has moved across the country, giving up everything familiar to us, and we're now settling, setting up roots, excuse me, in this beautiful community. What is or isn't a part of that is really important to me. I'm also finding that it's very essential to be involved in the community where you live and to help shape it, and this committee offers that opportunity. My children will grow up here, as they're only five and seven years old. So, where we live and what we have access to is important to us. I used to work for Case New Holland, a global tractor manufacturer, working with the legal team, negotiating inventory buyback based on state laws and regulations. And for example, there's actually a Case construction dealership here in town in Westboro right off the nine. And so, perceivably, to help you understand what I did, I would have worked to buy back eligible inventory under certain circumstances. These days, I'm lucky enough to be a stay-at-home mom to my children, walking them to school, caring for them, and being an active member of our neighborhood. I frequently walk around downtown, both for commerce and exercise. While I'm not a longstanding member of this community, as I feel so many people have shared their lifelong commitment in living here and being a part of the community. I don't own a business in town. I'm not an executive or financier, but I believe that my humble position as the caretaker of my family is of great importance and not to be overlooked. I want to represent the family of this community. We enjoy being a part of Westboro. And honestly, my family feels very lucky that we landed here. We didn't know much about the town when we chose to, well, we moved here last year, so there wasn't a whole lot of choices. But we feel so lucky and so honored to be a part of this community. And when we go out to eat and shop, we try to keep it in town. We realize that the money that we spend in Westboro stays in Westboro. Lastly, something I find important when it comes to making decisions about anything is having an open mind and being receptive to other ideas. There should be some give-and-takes, some negotiation in making decisions that affect an entire community. I don't have a specific agenda or a vested interest in this matter at all. I never even got a chance to eat at the civic drink. So, I don't know anything about it. But I want to understand the argument from both or all sides, and then use that information to make the best decision and outcome for everyone involved. As a newcomer to the area, coupled with being an active participant in the local commerce, I feel that I will provide a valuable and objective point of view. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian White.
Figured you were Brian, or else we missed somebody on the list.
Bringing up the rear here. Brian White, 23, Overlook Drive. Why I want to be on the committee as a non-golf member. I'm a 20-year resident of the town. My wife, actually, former Armstrong school teacher. My son is currently a sophomore at the high school and a member of the golf team, a member of the golf club. There's been a lot of talk, and I've even just mentioned golf, golf, but I think this property is a tremendous asset to the town. And we need to, as a committee, look at all the available options, not just for golfers, not just for people that want to go to the restaurant. It's a tremendous building, a tremendous space. What else can be done there? What can be done for winter activities, snow shoeing, cross-country skiing? It's already used for sledding. How can we capitalize on that as a town? What can we use within that footprint to do other things? Meeting rooms, art spaces, things like that. Most towns don't have municipal courses like we do, I think, you know? So, we really need to take a hold of this asset and get the most out of it that we can. As far as my background, 27 years growing a billion-dollar wealth management practice. So, I come to the table with a lot of analytical skills, finance background, which I think could be a tremendous asset to the committee. You know, I know that there are a lot of options. I've looked at all 176 pages of the previous report. Unlike some, I do think that all options should be on the table, even if it includes making things handicapped accessible. I happen to have, you know, a father-in-law who is wheelchair-bound, so I think that, you know, this building really needs to be something for the entire community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that is all our candidates this evening. I put it out to the board. Do we want to discuss this evening? I mean, that was a lot of people and a lot to absorb.
Yeah. So, first of all, I want to thank everyone that's still here, may still be watching, maybe is tucked in bed and said, "I'll watch the replay." So exciting to have so many people come out, whether golf club members or not, and express their interest, their passion for this town. We often hear sort of the, "Ugh, my taxes," which I get. But the pride that both newcomers and older folks, not by age, but necessarily, but are showing here is just, it's very heartening. So, I'm so glad this board undertook this to expand the committee. So, I want to thank the board for the openness to do that, and for, again, for everyone's interest. I would love some additional time. I'm happy to hear some discussion here, but I would love some additional time to process this because I think both hearing from the candidates, as well as reviewing their packets, I want to kind of be able to synthesize those and do a little more, you know, kind of evaluation than I have already done.
I certainly would agree with everything Shelby said. I think it'd be wise to use a little bit of time to, synthesize is a great word, pull these pieces together and understand it, all these great candidates. It's great to see such a wealth of expertise and knowledge and people, you know, willing to support the community on such a vital piece of property in town. So, I will just echo, thank you very much for coming out tonight and being part of the process. And as the chair said earlier, I certainly encourage you to continue, no matter if you end up on the committee or not, to engage and let them know what your thoughts are when possible. I'm fine deliberating this evening. I'm comfortable waiting. For folks who want to go back and look, as I read the letters, you know, I sort of outlined, you know, key points in my mind that I was looking for, given the charge we created for the committee in our discussion at the meeting, which we created the committee. You know, certainly, the job of making these appointments is easier when only one person shows up or two. So, I'm comfortable if folks want additional time to synthesize, let's, you know, continue this to the next meeting, if that's the consensus.
Yeah, I'm torn as well. We had a lot of the information ahead of time, putting it together, but I think in my, as I'm thinking about it, I think giving ourselves a little bit more time is good because I don't, sometimes you remember the last people that went and, you know, tying the stuff back together. The beauty of having Westboro TV doing this is the chance to go back and look at it. So, I think I'm supportive of at least putting off our vote until the next meeting, just so we can, these are tremendous folks here, and I echo that, what folks said. I mean, I wish we had more to put on there, but I do, yeah. But I would say, too, is that these were, and Sean started with this, and these are open meetings, and I would encourage those that, if they're not chosen, to show up at the meetings and voice their thoughts. Basically, what they don't have in the final thing is kind of votes that are taken, but doesn't mean that they can't attend and be active participants, too. So, that was my thoughts.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. And I think, you know, thank you to everyone for expressing their interest. Yeah, you know, unfortunately, we can't take everybody as voting members of this committee. It would be unwieldy. But I think that you have noted your interest, and if you are not selected, you know, people may still reach out to you for your feedback, for assistance with the committee. I think that because of you, looking at the interest here, and then you just multiply that across the community, how much interest there is going to be in this project, I think that the feedback and the work that is going to be needed done to gather that is going to be significant. And so, even if you're not a member of the committee, your assistance may be helpful in other pieces. The other thing I would mention, and this has not been determined, so I'm, you know, maybe cart before the horse here. This is the building use committee determining what the building should be used for. This then is not the building committee that would be in charge of actually executing on what that decision is. So, there will be follow-on opportunities as well. Is that a fair?
Yeah. Sean, I think you make a great point about that. I think, however the committee is comprised, that they will be well-served by going back to this and looking at our packet and gathering contact information from those who are not selected and engaging them because it can have a tremendous multiplier effect of, you know, we all, every person represents a different neighborhood, you know, a different profession, you know, their kids are at different ages, they don't have kids, what have you. So, I would encourage the committee to tap back into the applicants, if you will, the candidates, and engage them in the process of community outreach or in whatever form that takes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Shelby. And apologies if you were hoping for an up-down decision this evening. We do want to take a little bit of time to make this decision. It is important.
But we would make it at our next, at our next meeting.
Absolutely. 28. I mean, we got to move soon because we asked Rocktober 1st. So...
In fairness to those who are going to be on the committee, so the next meeting will be, we are typically Tuesdays, so it'll be March 28th.
Right.
And we will discuss it and come to a conclusion at that meeting. So, thank you all very much.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
And you're free to stay for the rest.
Yeah, you can stay as long as you like. And then there were crickets. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. Pretty good works. Okay. Let's go back to Article 7 and budget discussion, and I will hand it over to Kristi.
Thanks. Just some updates on the budget, and then, so there's three budgets that the board did not vote on at the last meeting because we were still waiting for some additional information. The first is Assabett. We had estimated a 2.5% increase, so about $22,000. We did get the final assessment from Assabett, and the increase was a 27.7% increase, or $243,000.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that percentage?
27.7% increase.
Is that because of students?
Yeah. So, that's based on students, a number of students that are using the school.
Do we have, just with that, Kristi, do we have the net increase of students? Do you happen to know that offhand?
I can pull that up.
Okay. Careful.
I'll do that before you're ready to vote.
27, that's what you said, right? 7% to 27%?
We had estimated 2.5%.
Two and a half.
And that was probably flat student enrollment, two and a half?
I'm just pulling it up now so I can, I'll tell you in a minute if I can pull up the
I mean, although the percentage is not what I think any of us wanted to hear, it's, we know that there's such a demand to increase, you know, growth in the trades. So, it's really a good news increase, albeit it comes, obviously, with the tax increase, I mean, a tax implication, excuse me.
I agree. I mean, we just heard the golf course as an asset. I mean, I think Assabett Valley is a huge asset for this community and other communities around it.
Absolutely.
And it's another forum for our students that that is the right school for them, and it's a phenomenal educational opportunity, so.
As a side note, was it last year? I think other towns outside of the original, you know, who are affiliated, were allowed to add students, and I believe that stopped because the demand was overwhelming from the towns involved, right? The primary towns.
There was a lottery.
Yeah.
No, but it's, I mean, obviously, we're sensitive to the budget, but I think it's fabulous that students are, you know, pursuing what they feel and what their families feel is the best educational path for them, and that it's available to them. You can't, you can't argue that.
So, we had nine additional students.
Nine. Yeah, just to the point. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, just, can you say it again with the, not the percentage, but the, our dollar?
Sure.
It's also, you know, just to echo a little bit on what Alan was saying, it's, the trades are so important today. I heard a statistic the other day that said that for every eight tritsmen that are retiring, only one is coming into the field. So, it's really important that we support a trade school like this, so. But that number does come as a bit of a shock. A good shock, though, in a way.
Yeah, and I mean, we say trades, but I think it's, and I know you say it in general terms, I mean, that what they, you know, the programs that are there.
They do a lot more than that.
And for those that choose, I mean, I've just heard and toured it many times when I was on the Finance Committee and others.
I'll call it a practical, like a more practical, technical education as opposed to trades. Yep.
But yeah, it's a huge valuable resource, so.
And what was the net dollar difference, or Kristi? I'm sorry, I know we got the percentage.
243,932, right?
So, that was, right. So, that's the increase from last year.
Thank you.
So, we went from 49 students to 58. For the debt budget, Linda Smith, our Treasurer Collector, explained some favorable percentage or interest rates on our borrow. And so, our debt budget went down. Initially, we had estimated a 9.8% increase, so 1.0, almost 1.3 million. And we've actually reduced it to a 5.7% increase, or 741,000.
So, what's that delta, then?
About 500,000.
Well, net, net, we're good 250 right now with those two.
Yeah. Give you the increase and then the decrease. That was strategic.
Yeah.
Yeah, give you the increase and then the decrease. That was strategic. So.
Bad news.
And so that's, that is consistent with our debt strategy. So we're able to keep it at that FY '20 level, which is our debt strategy. So it's good to be able to follow that and also be able to reduce our budget. The insurance budget, we had talked about how we had increased the health insurance line at 7% based on initial estimates. They had come back at a 9% increase, and so we were waiting for some final numbers. Our insurance company, or insurance consultant, had advised us that a lot of increases were coming in between 6% and 8%, sometimes higher. And so we were actually able to get a renewal with Blue Cross at 6.5%. So that's within.
Great job.
What we're seeing. Our recommendation has been to leave the budget at that 7% increase, so we're able to have that additional funding. Because, as you know, people come on and off the insurance, and so it allows us some additional funding for, for people who might come on.
But we don't have to increase it, which is why.
We don't have to increase it, and we're not decreasing it, correct.
So that's a net zero?
I did mention at the last meeting, and I do want to say it again, that we did look at, we did look at an additional purchasing group to move into, which was actually a lower percentage, it was a little over 3%. Well, that's a better number, obviously. It would require the town to move from a fully insured plan to a self-funded situation, which is in cooperation with these other communities. So it's a much bigger decision that we can't make this quickly. We really need to look at how that works and, you know, how, how that would play out. And so we'll continue to look at it, and we did talk to our IAC about it. But for now, we'll be moving forward with the renewal for Blue Cross. And then our electricity budget, we had budget, we had put in the original budget that 32.4% increase based on what we thought we would see with, with electricity rates. We did, we have been, as I've mentioned many times, we've been watching those numbers. Obviously, with the weather that we've just had, you know, numbers fluctuate in the wrong direction. So we're not, even though we had hoped to sign a new contract prior to town meeting, we don't, our contract doesn't expire until June. And so we're comfortable, based on what we're seeing for numbers, leaving the budget as is, moving forward with it there. And then if there was an extremely favorable rate that we sent a contract for, we could make an adjustment at the October town meeting. So that is staying the same.
And what is the number again? What's the percent?
I just, I didn't write that one down. So it's a 32.4% increase. I can go back to the, on that.
We don't think we'll go above that increase.
Right.
But there's not, we're not signing because there's a reasonable expectation that between now and June, rates will go down.
Correct.
This week's going to be warmer, so it might, the rates will go down.
We are watching.
Heat wave, heat wave.
So that's, so that's two budgets, the insurance and electricity, that are not changing. And so you could vote on those, you haven't voted on those yet. Assabett obviously had that increase, so you would vote on that. And then debt, you did vote on, but because we reduced it, we would need you to vote again.
So I would, I would move the approval of the insurance budget, the electricity budget as was presented in our booklet, and the Assabett Valley as presented with that increase, and to revote the debt budget with the described decrease.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Show of hands. Five to zero, five being present.
So right now, we're estimating the average single-family increase at that 765.54.
Sorry, say that again?
$765.54.
Can I ask a question back, one item in the agenda about the golf club?
Sure.
If possible. So, and I apologize for not bringing this up before, but, so as I was going through the applicants, I was really overwhelmed with how many. And I'm wondering if it would be fair to both the applicants, as well as, I guess procedurally, if we would want to consider increasing the number of members, the number from, so two golf members and three non-members.
Well, let me see, right, so that's not on the agenda, but I just, but the question is, is that an item people would want to add to the agenda?
Maybe I should be bringing it up on our issues and correspondence? I don't know, I just.
I think it's the right time to put it, but I don't think we can discuss it.
Right, right.
I think we should discuss it and potentially make a decision on that at the next meeting before we, as the agenda, and before we discuss who's going on.
Right now, we have seven on the.
Seven total members.
This would go to nine.
Residents, yeah, or more, but, but yeah, I mean.
And again, I know we can't discuss it, but I did want to just, what was fresh in our minds?
I am comfortable with that, and I would just, that, I think we, I echo your thoughts. And thank you for bringing it up, I think. And it might, discuss it next time because it might be, in my mind, even additional to that.
Yeah, okay.
Now, you don't want to make it unwieldy. We're not going to put 29 people on, but.
Right, right.
Seven, nine, 11. I mean, I think that we should discuss that. So I'd like to see it on the.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, for our next.
That sounds good. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, thanks.
Shelby, as a point. Yeah, so that is.
Back on track, sorry.
Yep.
Thank you.
So an item for agenda on the 28th.
We'll get to figure out and see how we get out of here before midnight.
Let's see, so back here, so was there a budget item we didn't, that?
I think you voted.
We just motioned all of them.
We have all the budgets.
That's all the budgets.
Okay, so the budget is approved, or is recommended. So the warrant articles, at our last meeting, we pushed the support of the warrant articles till tonight, so we have all of them in front of us. Is it easiest to go through and have folks mention sort of which ones they might want to vote separately, or, you know, not vote, and then go from that? Is, do I walk through, or have people marked them down already? What's the, what would people, folks be most comfortable with?
I think usually Ian sort of reads the item, has read the item, the chair's read the item in the past, the article, and then.
Question.
Question, and then we vote the block.
Yep.
Yeah, I have questions.
We want to hear your voice, so.
Yeah, we want to hear them all.
Let me see, I gotta pull up my, track it down. And I guess it's really, just talk to the title of each.
Yes.
Okay, so Article 1 has happened.
We don't have to vote on that one.
Article 2, Town Reports. Article 3, Prior Years Bills. Article 4, Fiscal Year 2024 Operating Budgets.
Done, voted.
Article 5, Fiscal Year 2023 Union Contracts. Article 6, Fiscal Year 2023 Legal Expenses Budget. Article 7, Funding Stabilization Reserve Account. Article 8, Regularly Recurring Articles. 8A, Reserve Funds, Advisory Finance. 8B, Restocking Sandra Pond. 8C, Request and Approve a Cable TV Budget. 8D, July 4th Block Party. 8E, Hazardous Waste Day. Now, Article 9, Small Business Grant Program. Article 10, Capital Improvements. 10A, Vehicle Replacement, Community Development. 10B, Security System Upgrades, Fire Department. 10C, Diesel Exhaust System Replacement, Fire Department. 10D, Information Technology Network Upgrade. 10E, Information Technology, Microsoft 365 Migration. 10F, Information Technology Systems Infrastructure Update. 10G, Purchase of Four Police Cruisers. 10H, Building and Grounds Capital Maintenance. 10I, Replacement of Two Administrative Vehicles, DPW. 10J, Wood Chopper Replacement. 10K, Bucket Truck Replacement. 10L, Six-Wheel Dump Truck Replacement. 10M, Utility Tractor Replacement. 10N, Mil Pond School Roof Restoration. 10O, Hastings School New Roof Design. 10P, Hastings School ADA Construction. I would take, consider P separately.
Yes.
Since the article doesn't.
Doesn't have a number.
Have the number, you know.
Right, and we, we don't have a number. It's short there.
So we, I think, vote the motion.
At town meeting?
At town meeting, people more, so pass over 10P.
When will that number be?
They actually, the school committee voted last night to pass over this article.
Really?
Yes.
Good. Reasoning?
I think, just based on the bid process, there, I think we would expect them back in October.
Okay, let's pull it out separately. And I think if they voted to pass over, I think.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we, I would still say, I would suggest that we just say we'll vote on it at town meeting so we can get more information from them of why they're passing over.
Right, I think that's a good way to proceed, yep.
Yep, so let's not vote on that one, just.
Okay, 10P. Okay. 11, Multi-Use Trail Design. 12, Library Building Improvements and Design. Article 13, Security Cameras, Police Department.
Excuse me, the security camera article will also be passed over, a motion to pass over.
Which one is that?
The security cameras for the police department.
The number.
13, Article 13. Okay. Article 14, Haskell Street Tennis Basketball Court Lights. Article 15, Department of Revenue Certification Reevaluation Board of Assessors.
I have a question on that.
Yep. Okay, so we'll just talk about that later, 15. Article 16, Hakamaka Pond Property Access.
I didn't have a sum of money, but Mark did mention a sum tonight. I didn't get the number written down.
30,820.
Yeah, he did, I guess.
Can we flag that for discussion since we haven't had any? Thanks.
16. Article 17, Flashing Crosswalk Signage. Article 18, Town Website Upgrade. Article 19, Transfer to Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Article 20, Rescind Borrowing Authorization.
Actually, sorry, Article 18, can we just, we had that one tonight, and just want to, I have a question on it, so.
18?
Yep.
Okay, 18. Article 20, Rescind Borrowing Authorization, DPW. Article 21, Storm Water System Improvements. Article 22, Town Water Distribution System Improvements. Article 23, Town Water Treatment System Improvements. Article 24, Town Water Supply Infrastructure Improvements. Article 25, Town Sewer System Improvements. Article 26, Town Sewer Collection System Improvements. Article 27, Establish Article 57 Storm Water Management Program in Westboro General Bylaws. Article 28, Storm Water Enterprise Fund Implementation. Article 29, Amend General Bylaws Article 51 Water Use Restrictions.
It's on page 23.
Section, it's right after Section 7.
Oh, oh, yep, it's, okay, it's a short one. Article 30, Acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A. Article 31, Establish Article 18 Community Preservation Committee in Westboro General Bylaws. Article 32, Replace Zoning Bylaws, Planning Board. Article 33, Amend Zoning Bylaws, Planning Board. 70 of these. Article 34, Update to Zoning Bylaws. Oh, yeah, there it is, right on the bottom. Okay, Article 35, Amend Animal Control Bylaw. Article 36, Amend General Bylaws Timing of Town Meeting and Town Election. Article 37, Roadway Acceptance, Quick Farm Road. Article 38, Amend General Bylaws Revolving Funds. And Article 39, Abandon the Westboro Climate Action Plan.
Call that one out.
I think so.
Called it out, yeah, questioned it.
So 10P and 13 will just be considering on town meeting floor. So then the others we'd called out, I had, were 15, 16, 18, and 39. Does that, what, that's what folks had?
So I would move that we recommend approval of all articles with the exception of 10P, 13, 15, 16, 18, and 39.
Second. Any discussion? Show of hands. Five to zero, five being present. Okay, thank you. Okay, so back to 15.
It's been a bitch, huh?
Yes. Completely overshot. Somebody can start.
This is the revenue certification, this is Patrick.
I can start it on, yeah, I have a simple question about it. I just wanted to understand, I guess, who does the work, and is this a fee, or is this a contracted? I just didn't know what that was, so.
So the assessor works with a, with a contract.
Okay, simple question. Thank you.
Okay. Any further? I'd move the, I'd move, we recommend approval of Article 15.
Second. Show of hands. Five to zero, five being present. Article 16. I guess, just.
Yeah, so I had, I had called this out, I just for the, the board should, might want to have some discussion and.
I guess my only concern on this, right, is, I'm for the motion. My concern is that people show up to town meeting, there isn't a dollar amount on the article, and yet at the bottom it says Select Board Votes and Approval, five to zero. So, you know, I would rather just vote at the meeting. I mean, I, I am entirely in approval, I guess, it just looks like, oh, there isn't even a dollar amount.
Carte blanche.
But there will be, I mean, the dollar amount will be in the motion.
Right.
And we heard it tonight at 3820. I mean, I'm supportive of it. I would be supportive of putting our vote, because we know what the motion's going to be.
Yeah, there's no risk of it changing between now and here, right?
Well, if it does, we'll revote it and, you know.
Alan, I'll provide my thoughts, I'll go last.
We, we know what the number is. We know it's, it's the necessary next step if we're going to ever open this beautiful property up to the public. If, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable voting on now, but if, you know, people feel that, you know, people see Select Board support without the number there, in the meeting, we're asked about it, we can say, well, we were presented with the number before we voted, or, you know, we can do our vote on the floor after, after the motion's been made. I'm, I'm fine either way. I, for me, you know, voting at this evening, five zero, or whatever it ends up being, is fine, if we think this should move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I would support us showing more fiscal prudence by voting on town floor. Once the numbers, you know, the motions actually provide. once the numbers, you know, the motions actually provided.
Oh, anyway, Shelby has to say, I mean, I guess, I might, what I said still stands, I still think we could vote it tonight, because we know what the motion's gonna be, but.
So, I am curious, do we know if NCON took a vote? I'm just curious.
They did.
I don't know.
They did?
Well, I assume they took a vote, because the R and R's going to print tomorrow, but I don't have the results of the vote.
I think they did take a vote on it.
They could be, but theirs could be, we will go downtown meeting floor, like they didn't, it's not required.
So, um, just, just for full transparency, and obviously we hold, the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee holds all of its meetings according to public meetings and open meeting law, at our meeting on March 8th, we had lengthy discussion about the best approach, you know, at this town meeting, and the committee voted, for the members that were present, five-three-zero, to move forward with what you saw presented. I was one of the dissenters, um, to not, to not move forward, and, so I will not be voting in support of the article. I think that there is, there are, in my opinion, there are still some other opportunities, through one example being, Yukon has a program that is grant, it's a grant program for technical assistance, and we found out about that at, well, I think like.
A couple weeks ago.
Well, I don't even remember the date, maybe the 7th or something, the 6th or, of March, um, and Christie and Jen Miller and I attended a meeting to understand kind of what, what does that technical assistance, what would that give us? I thought it was very promising, very interesting for this very complex site. I am fully supportive of opening this up for passive recreation, I think, you know, I think it will be a beautiful additional asset, but it's not, in my opinion, it's not as simple as just clearing trails, there are some complexities, there could be public opinion that, you know, it's like, it's a superfund site, is it safe? What if my kid walks in the water, is that okay? Like, there are just some elements of this that we don't know about, and so I feel, I feel like the technical assistance could give us more guidance, and it, it, the presentation was spot on, this work still has to be done at some point, and, and so this is just, this is one approach that we could take, to start this way, but I feel like going down the technical assistance route would give us more information and better inform the, the process in, as a whole. The other thing I think the board should be certainly aware of is, and you are aware of, is the regional dispatch grant, so we will hear about that around June, I think, that has been, we've applied for that as a town, and we have, we don't have any idea what that grant will pay for, so for example, um, you know, we don't know if as part of accessing that site and creating it basically to be a publicly accessible site, you'll remember when Chief Frisell presented, and he said, you know, there could be meeting space there, right, so it would be publicly accessible, right, you could actually drive up the driveway. The grant may require fencing of that area, the cap landfill, I should say, and so this proposes, again, it doesn't propose the actual implementation of the work, it's the work, the work plan to define the work, to get the bid documents, and it's only thirty thousand, I get it, but my feeling is, let's wait, let's explore this technical assistance grant a little bit more, let's give it time, but, by the way, that work, Yukon said, if we get the grant, which I think there's a high likelihood, we would get the grant, and that work would be done over the summer, we'd know about the regional line-one-one, and then we could come forward at town meeting saying, you know, kind of, here's what we've learned, and here's what we know. So, for that reason, I won't be supporting this article, and, but again, to be clear, it's not that I don't support where we're going, and I appreciate the patience of the, in the community, and many committee members who have spent a long time, more years than I've lived here probably, wanting this site to be open, but I just feel like there's not a rush to open this, Westboro has a lot of other priorities, and we could just kind of salt that thirty thousand dollars away, and, and use it at a future town meeting. And I'm happy to answer any other questions, I don't want to put Christie on the spot, she's also a member of that committee, she can provide her thoughts as well.
Just a question, so you said it was voted five to three, I guess, any insights into the, the majority that voted for, because I think what you're saying?
Yep.
Makes a whole lot of sense.
Yep.
I think, so actually, two questions, one, if you're willing, because I can go back and look at it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, in either of your opinion. The second one is, maybe a little bit more clarity on this Yukon thing, is to, does that cover some of the things they were doing here, or just a little bit more about what that would do?
Sure.
In relation to what they're asks, I think that would be helpful to me.
Sure. So they, so Yukon will do a, and we can get you some more information on this, if the board doesn't decide, doesn't want to place a vote now, you could consider it up to town meeting, but they do, they'll do a whole site assessment, like, of what the potential uses are, so we would give them, here's what we want to do, passive recreation, we might want to do solar, there might be this regional dispatch center, so we give them those ideas, and they do a full assessment, they seek community input, they understand, they would give us guidance on what, based on their experience in superfund sites and brownfields, that, like, what might be community areas of concern, and how we would address those. Christie, can you think of anything else that?
I, I think that one of the things that we found exciting about the technical assistance is that when, when you approach the superfund site, there's a lot of sort of understanding of sequencing, so we know that we have to have a work plan, and we have to have a soil plan, and we have to have a health and safety plan, and they have to get approved by EPA. This Yukon program is an EPA program, and so they help you sort of understand what order those go in, and how you get them, and then help you sort of with the review, because all of, for us, everything has to be reviewed by EPA, DEP, and BESR, as the responsible party, has to weigh in to make sure that they are able to access those areas on the site that they need to continue to access. So, as a committee, we have been working with tie and bond to, to understand that, to try to understand that, but these are just people who are, have expertise, and.
Yeah, I almost looked at, when I heard about the, when I met with Yukon, it was like, the whole site, their process was like, oh my God, I wish we had found this twelve months ago, because we would have had a much clearer path, and to Christie's point about sequencing, understand what are the questions or the hurdles in this relatively simple plan about fencing in an area and creating some trails, what concerns might DEP and EPA, like, what, what do we have to be aware of? And I think we don't know what we don't know, and I personally like a little bit more of a holistic approach to a very complex site, even though the plan itself is kind of simple in its merits. To answer Ian's question, so I think the, the feeling of those that were, the three that voted not to move forward, and again, when I say move forward, the warrant, the articles aren't beyond the warrant, so it's really in support of placing a number and moving forward in that sense, really, I think echoed the same thing of, like, let's take a little more time, what's the rush? We, we all want to get to the same end goal, but just take a slightly different path. So that was it, those that are supporting it felt like, you know, we've got to get started, we've got to get out, let's put it to the, the voters and have them, you know, authorize the, or support or not support, um, you know, funding that has to be done anyway at some point, and let's get moving, get moving, and I think there's, there's a fair amount of frustration of like, we've been talking about this for so long, let's just get going. Is that fair, Christie?
Yeah, I think it does feel a little bit like, almost like starting over, to, to kind of go work with this, this group, you know, in our conversation, we did explain that we're probably a little bit further along than someone who is sort of just initiating the process, and they understood that and could accommodate it, but I definitely think that people are excited about the property and accessing it, and, and we have been, I mean, how, how long has this committee been in place, like, a year and a half, maybe? So.
Are you a voting member?
I am, but I was not present for the vote.
Okay. How would you vote? Tell me. So is there information on that, Yukon? Is there like pamphlets or flyers?
Yes, I can.
Plays a website?
So, given this conversation, I would suggest we hold off until town meeting floor, and if possible, have this additional information presented.
Think it's compelling.
At our next meeting, so that it'll give it broader exposure to the public, and we can take that into consideration.
So your next meeting is after town meeting?
Would we want to meet, like, before, like, I mean, we, I think, Christie, we could send the information?
Yeah.
You guys could look at it as if any other packet, and then we could answer questions, have a brief discussion before town meeting?
Yeah.
Sure.
Is the plan to discuss this alternative on town meeting floor?
Absolutely not.
No, because as a committee, we voted, the committee voted to move forward.
The committee voted in support of what was presented, so I had great hesitation, but in full transparency to this board, and to myself as a committee member, I feel like it was important to raise this. Yep.
Very good.
I have agreement to hold off our vote until?
And I think, I think also even holding off the vote makes sense, because there isn't a number there, so I think kind of all things considered, as was brought up, so.
Thank you, that, yeah, there was none what I expected.
Either.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, not at all.
People went to sleep earlier, missed out.
Article 18 was the town website upgrade, this is mine, I, just a quick thing, the number that was shown to us tonight was like forty-eight thousand, we have fifty thousand here, are we?
Yeah, so we'll adjust the motion based on the need, we got the, the full quote, it was just, it was about fifty-one thousand, something, there were a couple things that we thought we could pull out, so, yeah, so the motion will be for the amount that Mark was showing.
Okay, so it'll be that forty-eight thousand, whatever the number was, okay.
So, do we want to?
I'm supportive of it, again, it's, I mean, we, we saw the number tonight, so, unless you're gonna drop another bomb on us here. No, it was really good, no, don't be sorry, I think it was really good.
Saw the number tonight, and it's less than in the warrant.
Right.
Yes.
So I'm, I would move that we vote in support of Article 18.
I'll second.
Okay, any further comment? Seeing none? Show of hands? Five to zero, five being present.
Article 39?
Article 39. Any discussion?
I, I just don't support it. Town's before, the town has voted on a climate action plan, I mean, I know this doesn't have any binding power, but I don't see any reason to support abandoning the climate action plan at this time.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the state, the state has set expectations, 2030, 2050, and I, well, I think that we should be not the leaders, but in the, toward the head of the pack in, in these related initiatives, I, I don't want to see Westboro get, like, you know, be on the trailing end when opportunities have dried up, and we think about like, the Community Preservation Act, and everyone's saying, like, well, it took us forever to adopt, and now the, the actual percent that you get is less than it was had you adopted it ten years ago, so I just think that this, this is where we are moving as a country, globally, in many cases, not all countries, and we, we need to be part of that, but we also need to be smart about, you know, decisions we make along the way, so, I, and, and the proponent of the article didn't convince me otherwise, so.
Yeah, and I would just add, we had the Master Plan Invitation Committee meeting this week, and this was a, a topic that got a lot of conversation in regards to how the cap impacts the master plan, matter of fact, there's an action coming out of that committee to go look at the cap and better understand the specific goals and strategies that are listed in the cap, and make sure we understand which ones are and are not with inside the master, master plan, and specifically to understand which ones we see as priority, because there's this one item in the master plan right now, it's kind of this catch-all around the cap, but there's a lot of other items in there as well, but not everything in the cap, so there was, again, a lengthy discussion about it, why I bring this up is because it was very important to that entire committee to understand the cap, and a lot of support there, at least my perception of what people said was in support of doing that work. So, I would also echo, I'm not, I didn't see a strong argument for, for the, the author of this article, I heard the gentleman present a number of times, and I didn't, I didn't find, again, the, the argument to be compelling, so.
I'd only be repeating. Ian, any?
No, I, I would move that we vote not to support Article 39.
Second?
You could do it, are you doing a motion to defeat?
Motion to defeat.
I'm, I'm sorry, what?
Motion to defeat Article 39.
What's the?
The motion would be a motion to defeat.
That's how the AFC structures their motions.
Since it has to be a majority decision, in theory, we, our motion would be to defeat, and then we would.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So my motion is?
Instead of zero to five against, or whatever.
Motion to defeat, sorry.
All those in agreement? Five to zero, five being present.
You got everything?
Yes, so that is seven, eight, we already did nine, we are on to number 10, the Arbor Day proclamation.
I move.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if this was the purview of the vice chair to.
Could be, I was just gonna read through it quickly, anybody can do it.
I need the practice, so.
Go ahead.
All right, hold on a second, let me bring this up here.
Do you want to take a sip of water before you start?
It's not as long as the one Ian did earlier, but it's.
I advise it.
I will.
The man likes his bond motions.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I got the right starting point here.
Whereas.
Yeah, whereas, okay, well, I didn't know, yeah, okay, so that's fine.
I move.
I move, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in the town of Westboro increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy, therefore, be it resolved that the Westboro Select Board acknowledges the importance of National Arbor Day, which will be celebrated on April 28th, 2023, and therefore, be it further resolved that Westboro Select Board urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day in Westboro on April 28th, 2023, by either planting a tree or maintaining existing trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations.
All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present.
Just a side note on the one, it's my daughter's birthday also, so she'll be very happy that I.
Wow.
Awesome. Happy birthday in Arbor Day.
And she studies trees. Trees are good.
Okay, well done. On to item 11, a request to appoint Becky Dolan to the Waste Management Exploratory Committee. Committee.
Sure, yep, I'll take that, thank you. So Becky Dolan had reached out to Kristi, and I had a conversation with her about her interest in joining this committee. She's very interested in sustainability and how we manage our waste and all of that, and you can see she's provided a statement of interest in our packet. She's very interested in recycling and composting, and she has a young child and wants to be an example for that. So I would love to motion that we move to appoint Becky Dolan to Waste Management Exploratory Committee for an indefinite term.
Second.
Any comments?
It's a great, it's a great time in that committee, and where we're at with our work to have that additional member, so good timing, she will be able to step right in and.
I was going to say, the PDF generator glitched, so she's in the index of the packet three times, so she must really want it.
Oh, she.
So I'm glad, I appreciate her stepping forward to get involved.
Yes. Excellent, thank you very much, Becky. And all those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Okay, item 12, an update to the Administrative Secretary Fire Department job description and amend classification plan.
That's me. You have a redlined version of the Administrative Secretary for the Fire Department, that's the current title, we're proposing to amend the title, but as you are used to seeing, we're proposing just updates that really reflect the actual duties and responsibilities of this position. The reason you're seeing it now is the current, the incumbent will be retiring later this month or early next month, I don't recall when, and before we post the job description, we just wanted to take this opportunity to update it. This is a non-union position, so we didn't need to run it by any unions. One thing you'll note, we did update, it's remaining in the current pay grade that it's in, that just had never been updated on the old description when those were redone, and obviously, the chief has had input into this, and it really just identifies some of the key tasks. This is the sole administrative position supporting his department, the work that he does, the deputy chief, as well as the fire prevention and just department-wide. So he was very happy to see that it accurately reflects the responsibilities.
Any comments?
Yeah, I guess two questions. I said I didn't realize it was a non-union position, so why isn't it part of the clerical union?
It's a confidential position.
Confidential, okay. And then I know a lot of the changes here were, it makes sense to me, but there's a lot that were pulled out, and it just seemed like there was a lot of work that was being pulled out of the position, and I'm just questioning, is that going someplace else? Do we expect to have a need for another position to do that work? Because it seemed like there was a lot of work that was being moved off of this from.
I mean, some, I should let Kim speak to it because she worked with the chief on it, but some of them are just typical administrative tasks, so we don't include in our job descriptions anymore that someone receives telephone calls, as an example, or opens mail.
Okay. Just want to make sure the telephone is still going to be answered, so.
It's that, that this person is the primary point of contact, I think there was some updated language.
Yeah, that one does speak to telephone.
It was really intended to reflect that they're no longer just answering telephone calls, it's email, it's social, it's, you know, all the variety of ways in which they interact with the public, that's much broader at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it truly updates them that's 11 years old, if I look at the dates on this, so.
Yeah.
Right. Now.
I'm sorry, one thing I just wanted to note, so the update to the classification plan for this one is merely changing the title of the position on the plan.
Okay. All right. Now, thank you for your thoughtful consideration every time these openings come up. Ian, you wanted to?
Yeah, I was going to move to approve the amended Fire Department Administrative Secretary job description as presented, moving to executive assistant and to update the classification plan.
Second. Any further comment? No? Show of hands? Five to zero, five being present. Kim, thank you very much. Item 13, approval of the meeting minutes of February 28, 2023.
I move their approval.
Second.
Any questions? Show of hands? Five to zero, five being present. Sila, thank you very much. Item 14, issues and correspondence of the Select Board. Joe, did you want?
Sure, I can start. Couple of quick updates. One, I just want to remind folks that for the Stormwater Utility article, Chris Pant was gracious enough to be the first guest on a new TV show that I'm hosting called The 01581, Let's Talk. And so Chris and Rich from Woodard and Kern joined me, and so that is available thanks to Westboro TV. So that will be a weekly show, so welcoming content from the board and from the public, and I'll be doing a little stint with Karen on that. But really, the idea, I'm talking about it here because the whole purpose is to connect the community with, you know, relevant, important information that relates to lots of work that we do in other boards and committees, and Kristi has graciously agreed to be a frequent host to give a quick update, so you'll be seeing her too.
Celebrity.
Yes. Movie star.
Oscars coming.
So anyway, it's fun and it's good work, and appreciate Westboro TV here tonight as well, so I'll thank them. The, for the Council on Aging, the second bus is back on the road, so one's still in repair, but there are two out there running, so that's great. And I do want to acknowledge the passing of Oscar Najarian, who is a longtime member of the Council on Aging, very involved in the community, particularly through the Council on Aging, and want to acknowledge and thank him, you know, thank his family for his service and acknowledge his passing. Also want to let the public know that there are two vacancies on the Council on Aging, and so encourage folks, if they are interested, to apply. Moving to the Actor Transportation Safety Committee, DBW, and I can't remember if Kristi mentioned this at a previous meeting, so apologies if it's a repeat, but applied for Safe Roots to School Grant, and for the, over by Fisher and over by Gibbons, and that grant was, I can't, I don't think the right word is accepted, but it was asked to be, the grantors want to look into it further and really expand it into a much bigger project, so to encompass really more sidewalk and safe space for kids, so more to come on that, but that was, that was encouraging news, and the grant total could potentially double, so. Fails punch list actually has been completed, except for the exterior landscaping, so once the nurseries start to open up, some plantings have to be replaced, and that's all part of the project, but the multi-stack system and the, all the wells and all of that are operating as expected, and that is being, so that's very good news. And I think that is all that I have for tonight, thank you.
Come back to me.
Okay, okay.
Just very quickly, checked in with the Spirit Committee, they were here many months ago, talking about potential plans for fireworks. They've been doing work in the background, and I've been informed that they believe that's on track for the summer, and so that's moving forward, the work there. And want to thank everyone who voted, want to thank everyone who went out, got the signatures, and got themselves on the ballot, too. Takes a lot of courage, gumption, to put yourself out there to run for public office, and it's appreciated when people care enough about the community to get involved.
Well said.
Just a few things first, we've been talking about it, but just to remind folks that March 25, 9:00 a.m. at the high school is town meeting, and hope everyone can make it. Two is, Rec Commission was supposed to meet last Tuesday, it got postponed to this Tuesday once again, so they unfortunately were meeting at the same time that we were meeting, so it feels like that happens every time, so I was not able to do that, but as we talked earlier, they were, one of their agenda items was to appoint the Rec Commission representative to the golf course building reuse committee. I think I mentioned this the last time, but just also to keep it out there, April 15, Saturday, April 15, 10:00 a.m., the trustees of Soldier Memorial are doing the commemoration or the recognition of the new militia in Minuteman Monument in Minuteman Park, so this is the second one in that park, so we'll send, we'll formally invite all, to all the board members, but also the community to be out there. David Nurse, who was the resident behind this and has been coming to the trustees of Soldier Memorial meetings and working with us on that, has been putting together the agenda, we have reached out to all the state officials already for them coming, and should be a great event, it's going to be pretty quick, we're going to try to keep it 30 minutes is what we've talked about, but would, I hope folks will come out for that, and then.
Ian, can you go back on town meeting and just speak to the schedule that we're going to follow, or Kristi, just so folks hear it if they're still listening?
So the meeting starts at 9:00, and the, the school will be offering lunch, so it'll be working lunch, so you can go and pick up a sandwich or salad, similar to last year, I think is the plan, and then looking for a 90-minute dinner break around 5:30.
Thank you.
That'll be a motion of the meeting, correct?
Sorry?
That'll be a motion of the meeting.
Yes, yep.
Break will be, right, right, but just sort of to socialize that, so that folks.
Someone could make a motion for a motion.
Exactly. Thanks, sorry to interrupt.
The only other thing is, and it's been all over social media, but pretty special thing that a Westboro, former Westboro resident, a Westboro High School grad, won numerous Oscars, pretty nice of Daniel Kwan, congratulations, and I know there's a buzz around town of trying to do recognition for him, but just exciting, exciting to have little old Westboro recognized, but he did acknowledge, if folks watched it, he did acknowledge friends from high school and other things, so.
In the neighborhood he grew up in.
Yes, so, pretty cool. So congratulations to Daniel.
Excellent.
Well, on that note, I'll just mention that I did have a number of residents reach out to me or pull me aside in the hallway and ask about doing a Daniel Kwan Day, similar to what we did with Nikki Stone, so just something for a future board discussion as to whether or not that's something we would entertain, and obviously, there's a number of logistics issues that would have to be dealt with, depending on what that would look like. And then my one item that I also wanted to share briefly, talked a little bit about the Master Plan Implementation Committee, we've been meeting fairly regularly, this past week's meeting was a very productive meeting, the team went through, had an exercise where Kristi, as well as the town department heads and committee chairs, took a look at the 205 items on the list of the master plan, and identified things that had been completed or were in progress or might be blocked somehow. That was presented to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, MPIC, we'll just call them for, make it short, and the team then assessed those things that were looked at, thought to be done, a couple of items were pushed back as items to get some more information on, but additionally, the team was also able to do some great work around looking at what they had already prioritized, and understanding those priorities, and coming to an agreement what they believed those priorities were. We had a list of 17 priorities from three sub-teams, and we got that down to 15 by the end of the meeting, but again, there's more work to be done to understand some other pieces, like I mentioned earlier, around the cap and some other things, but I think it was a very productive session, so just wanted to give you that info.
Patrick, thank you very much. I just have one thing, so the Library Building Committee has a session this coming Tuesday, the 21st, at 7:00 p.m. in the Golf on Meeting Room, discussing Article 12 for residents who would like to still learn more about Article 12, you know, sort of the article around the library building and fun in determining the needs of library building. The members of the committee will be there this coming Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. And with that, that is our agenda, and pardon me, thank you, Westboro TV, thank you, Jeff, and notes for executive session, do you want?
Yeah, I was just going to read it.
You're lucky.
Yep.
Good new job.
I print them out.
All right, I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro, Lax Media LLC and Lax Media Mass LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 28, 2285, CV 01281, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Worcester Land Court, 19TL 00768, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE 129 East Main Street, Town of Westboro versus Westboro Retirement Residents LLC, Worcester Superior Court, Docket Number 2185, CV 00292, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Residents of Westboro Station/Northland TP-LPL LLC at 100 Charlestown Meadow Drive, Enforcement of Affordable Housing, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, with respect to litigation, RE PFAS, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at 121 West Main Street, and under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A 7, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive minutes of February 28, 2023.
I declare that in.
Wait.
Did you do collective bargaining?
First one, I didn't hear it.
Oh, this was, that was in, whatever was in today's packet.
Oh, sorry. And under MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with firefighters, with the firefighters union. Second, oh, sorry.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating and litigating position, the board will not be reconvening in an open session after the executive session, can I get a second to the motion?
Second.
Roll call, vote?
Partially yes.
Welch, yes. Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Keough, yes. Thank you very much, good evening.